Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us at the Peralta Community College District Board of Trustees meeting for January twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. We'll call this meeting to order at six oh four P M. Can we do our pledge of allegiance? Let's go ahead and I'll ask Vice President Quinlan to join, to lead us. Thank you very much. Four point three, roll call Sasha.
Yes, ma'am. Student trustee Hogan? Student trustee Latino?
Here.
Trustee Withrow? Is trustee, trustee Withrow's mic on?
Trustee Withrow, do you have your mic on?
Yes, here.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Johannes?
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yep.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice?
Yes, here.
Trustee Quinlan?
Here.
Trustee Dolphin Polk?
Here, thank you.
Okay, four point four, statement of cooperation. Peralta Board has adopted a statement of cooperation that codifies our commitment to set the bar for excellence in governance in the community college leadership and to lead by example for our Peralta colleges. Full statement of cooperation is attached to the agenda, but in summary, we have committed to build trust and seek to understand each other, to be prepared and follow good governance and ethical protocols, and to model the behavior we want others to exhibit. We therefore commit to honoring and upholding these commitments in words and action. Next is four point five, report of action taken in closed session. I'll hand it over to Vice President Quinlan.
Madam President, it's a nice closed session. The board voted on the following items. Item two point three, public employee discipline dismissal release according to government code section five four nine five seven subdivision B. One recommend, recommend terminate, terminate employment agreement for employee number four five nine zero. Motion was made by trustee Withrow, second by trustee Ewan. Six eyes, trustee Withrow, trustee Polk, trustee Gonzalez Ewan, trustee Bella Reese, trustee Johannes and trustee Quinlan, no zero abstain zero. That's report.
Thank you very much, Vice President Quinlan. Four point six, approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Dolphin Polk?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes.
Great, we'll move on to four point seven, approval of the minutes. Motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Thank you very much. Roll call.
Student trustee Hogan? I know you're there. Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Dolphin Polk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Four point eight, approval of the minutes from the board retreat. Motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you, second. Thank you. Roll call.
Just to confirm, it was trustee Ewan who's picking in the most? Thank you.
That is correct.
Great. Student trustee Hogan? Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Dolphin Polk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Four point nine, associated student government reports. Do we have any leaders? Were able to speak tonight?
They should be panelists, so we've got Masih and Said?
Hello, everyone. On the behalf of the A S P C C and B C C, we just want to welcome back all the students from the winter break. And just quickly talk about the spring to success. So B C C is offering similar to how we had the fall for free, the spring to success. All fees will be covered for students who are eligible, including weekly meals and students who have six or plus units will also be eligible for free parking and hundred dollar, a hundred and fifty dollar Clipper card. And on top of that, similar to the fall, how the A C Transit EZ Pass was covered with the fall is free, the spring to success should also be free for the A C Transit pass. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else, Sasha?
I do not see anybody else. Lisa Hogan, student trustee Lisa Hogan, do you have a report out? I know she does a report out sometimes. She says no.
Okay. Hearing none, we will move to the next item, four point ten, Peralta Classified Senate Report.
We have Roberto Gonzalez.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, I think I have audio. You guys can hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, good. All right, well. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Jackson, students, fellow coworkers, and members of the public. I'm Roberto Gonzalez. I work, I went to that, there we go. I work for Berkeley City College. I'm the Alternate Media Technology Specialist. I am a member of S E I U ten twenty-one. I'm our chapter publicist and site steward. And sometime late last year, I was elected the president of the Peralta Classified Senate. I'd first like to continue with the tradition of college senate reports, starting with the College of Alameda. So College of Alameda Classified Senate had a successful Flex Day event with faculty, classified staff, students, and administration. There were three Flex Day components that are part of C O A's professional development series, the first being governance training, procurement and contract training, and the third being requisition training. They are also participating via their college professional development committee to support classified staff development and mentoring classified members to be future faculty and administrators. Moving next to Laney College. In December, the fifth annual Laney Classified Senate Book and Toy Drive took place. Laney's classified books and toys were provided to over seventy children at the Laney Children's Center. And each child was given a cute picture taken with Santa Claus to the children. The Classified Senate also provided coffee and treats to faculty and staff in the newly renamed Rivas Classified Senate Lounge on Monday, the first of the first day of classes. This was actually the first event held in the space since the ribbon cutting in November in the space. Following Renee Rivas's receiving the posthumous Employee of the Year Award and also renaming Laney's Classified Senate Lounge in the tower building, Laney's Classified Senate is happy to announce the the Renee Rivas Scholarship that was just established the last week with the assistance of Renee's beloved daughters Nicole, Jasmine, and Anne Marie. Renee was a dedicated and respected Peralta Community College District employee. For over thirty years, Renee held various positions throughout all four Peralta campuses and the district office. Renee unfortunately passed away during the COVID nineteen pandemic. This new scholarship has been established in memory of Renee to provide financial help to students enrolled at any of the Peralta Community Colleges. The P C S, Peralta Classified Senate asks that we all continue to honor Renee's passion to guide and mentor Peralta Community College District students by easing the financial worry that may often accompany education by contributing to the scholarship. The goal is to raise two thousand five hundred dollars by March thirty-first. And the Laney Senate hopes to award at least two student scholarships this spring. Those wishing to donate or apply can do so from the Peralta College Foundation website. And Laney's leadership would also like to thank all the classified professionals who have worked tirelessly over the past few weeks in preparation for the Spring is Freeze semester for two thousand and twenty-three and that campaign. Leadership says that your hard work is deeply appreciated. Let's see, I've actually, just before this meeting, I got a late breaking report here from Merit. So if you'll just indulge me. If I can find my report for marriage. Ah, here we are, okay. So Merit, so this is coming from Merit's Classified Senate President that says that the Merit Classified Senate is proud to announce that our Classified Professional Development I E P I plan was submitted and approved with an exclamation point. Congratulations, Merit, on a job well done. This is truly a milestone and an epic moment for our classified professionals and institution. We would like to publicly thank all Merit classified professionals that took the time to engage in the I E P I visits with the P R T team. It was pivotal that they were given the opportunity to express their concerns, ideas, and point of view as it pertains to the need for classified professional development. Without their vital input, we would not have the foundational information needed to develop a plan that speaks to the needs of Merit classified professionals. We also would like to thank the Merit Academic Senate and faculty for their support of this initiative. Finally, we would like to thank our management team for prioritizing the I E P I grant initiative as an opportunity to establish professional development opportunities for Merit classified. They end with, we look forward to the implementation phase of our plan as we are confident that we will create a sense of agency among the classified professionals that accelerate their career advancement, clarify professional advancement pathways, and bolster the leadership skills and professional expertise of Merit's classified professionals. So kudos to Merit. I'm going to move into my last section here that is specific to the Peralta Classified Senate. So, and also provide some background, the Peralta Classified Senate, the shared governance body that draws from each of the five campus locations, makes up the Peralta Classified Senate and continues to perform important work of its own. Last year, a senate subcommittee produced a major update to our constitution and bylaws that largely took it was largely to ensure that the district administrative center's newly formed senate of classified staff was officially included in the P C S. But the subcommittee also made several procedural clarifications throughout the document with the intention of making things easier for future senate officers to take the helm. So allow me to share just the P C S mission statement with you that I think speaks to the the mentality and the perspective of, of the Peralta Classified Senate. In part, it reads that the Peralta Classified Senate will bring a pragmatic, collaborative, frontline perspective to bridge policymaking and procedural implementation and promote professional growth and development. In keeping with the P C C D mission statement, we will, through direct participation in district-wide governance, increase our understanding, communication, transparency, and raise the quality of service, thus improving students' educational experience in support of student success. So this mission statement speaks volumes, I think, in both the intentions and actualization of collaboration and service to our community, which leads me to my final topic for tonight. Based on last year's tentative agreement between P C C D and S E I U ten twenty-one, a Peralta Classified Senate Subcommittee has been hard at work reviewing and preparing recommendations to a draft administrative policy, or draft administrative procedure, rather, for the purpose of providing a process for employees to request regularly scheduled telework. While the term telework may sound semantically somewhat dated, the classified employees overwhelmingly consider remote work options to be relevant and even a necessary consideration of our work as it relates to environmental impact, attendance, recruitment and retention, and efficiency. This, this subcommittee is on target to complete its work this week, where it will then be vetted for approval by the Peralta Classified Senate, hopefully next week, then shared with Vice Chancellor McKinley in time for the next P G C meeting, and then hopefully being adopted by the board in February. So this concludes my P C S report for this evening. I thank you for your attention and patience. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Dr. Moore, would you like to give your presentation? Report back, District Academic Senate?
Okay, sorry, my apologies. Donald Moore, I'm the president of the District Academic Senate and want to thank Roberto for, it sounds like it's a great mission that you guys have. Our mission, for those of you who are new board members, is, and I want to speak to a little bit about A B seventeen twenty-five, which was put into law back in the late nineteen eighties that really addresses issues around how community colleges participate and, and how we engage with one another. And central to that is, was the role of the academic senate. And our role is within what we call these ten plus one matters, which are all academic and professional matters that we have primacy in. And part of that is, we have, we are to have a relationship and develop a relationship and maintain a relationship with the Board of Trustees as well as their employee, who is the chancellor. The college academic senates have to have a relationship with the, with the presidents of each of the colleges and certainly through this vehicle in terms of the District Academic Senate, engage with the Board of, Board of Trustees. I say all of this because the chancellor and the senate presidents about a week ago participated in a colleagues in action training that occurred here in this boardroom where we had the president of the California Community College League and the president of the state senate come in here to work with us and to really discuss what does it mean to be a relied upon district? And partly, the issue was that we, as the academic senate representing the faculty, we engage and we have primacy on issues of academic, anything from our hope soon information that we'll get from the A C C J C. We work on those matters. We work on budgetary matters. We work on capital issues. We work on professional development, any and all of those areas. And so partly, our concern had been, and the reason why we requested this meeting was meeting was because when the academic senate produces a resolution, the resolution that we produce is not these seven people or these twelve people in a room who say, let's have this resolution developed. It generally comes from our senates at the college campuses and the sentiment of the faculty, that's who we represent. And so when we submit these resolutions and the wherewithal, we are basically saying, this matter is pertinent to our academic mission. This matter is something we want you to address. And so when we're denied that or said no to, it's the right of the CEO and of the Board of Trustees to do so. However, the caveat is, you can't do it all the time. You can only do it sometime. And it's written in Title V, it is written in Ed Coke. And so today, I wanted to remind everybody of this fact and what the role of the academic senate is. And this law and Title V and then our own A P's and B A P's is to try to bring balance to the governing processes to allow voices to be heard and for voices to be acknowledged in some kind of way. And partly, I think that we've gone away from that. And so today, particularly for you new Board of Trustees, I wanted to raise up the fact that on academic matters, professional matters, we, the academic senate of Peralta, of each of the colleges, are the primacy. We are the ones that are the ones that you need to consult with, that you need to collegially consult with. And I want to stress the word collegially because if you come to us collegially, we will go to you collegially. Right? And we want to make sure that we have the relationship that is written into law with this Board of Trustees, with our chancellor, and with certainly our wonderful presidents that we have here today. So I wanted to really spend a moment to talk about that. The other things that I'm happy to report is obviously our professional developments went very well in terms of our flex days. I was again reminded that that as our technology grows, that we have A I and these chatbots, that's this new way of of getting nuances when they write, automatically write. You pose something detailed to them and then they'll come, write it all out for you. And as an anthropologist, as a cultural anthropologist, I was like, whoa. This is something that we now have to try to address with our students about how we basically try to get from them the necessary information in order to have some idea that they understand the material and so on. And so we all were in these workshops and there were a variety of different workshops. And I really commend the T D folks at each of the campuses as well as the district, Inger Stark and the rest of the folks for putting on a really wonderful and for me scary workshop about what in fact is out there right now. Finally, I'd like to leave with just, as a social scientist, I get frustrated when there is agreements on us utilizing science when we make decisions about this. And partly, when we go off script, it frustrates me. It frustrates me to no end because in December, as everybody was supposed to, you engage with your unions to to come to some resolution on what would be appropriate. Time and time again, in the fall, we kept on saying to to folks here at the district as well at the colleges is, follow, follow the C D C, follow Alameda Health Department, which is localized, which says whether or not one should wear a mask or one should not wear a mask. Right? Now, the problem is, is people are maybe thinking that Alameda Health Department is now being politicized because they didn't require masks during the surge that we had during November and December. I don't know, but I do know that we should be looking at science and we shouldn't arbitrarily, based upon one constituency group, decide that we should have masks. We were already having masks voluntarily. That faculty, if they wanted to have masks inside their their classrooms and their labs, they were allowed to. I am assuming the same was for classified folks who were inside their offices, that they had that option. And so I don't like it when we see that people are being moved for whatever boogeyman that's inside the, inside the room. And what I mean by that is whatever strand of of COVID that we're having and 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 everybody's talking about, oh, what's coming out, what's coming up? Well, we're always going to have different things that are going to come up. And so we're going to have to do this on the basis of science. We're not going to do it on the whim of a constituency group or agreement by the chancellor or the agreement by the Board. We really need to have some consistency. You don't see, you see C S U's other college districts on a whim. On one day, it's, it's, it's no, it's optional. And then the next day, at Flex Day, it said that, no, now everybody's going to be wearing it inside. I have no problem with wearing masks inside. I have a problem when it's politicized. I have a problem when it's not based on science because we're an academic institution. Right? And so in consideration, I hope that this Board of Trustees will stop going willy-nilly back and forth on this and take a stand and take a stand for science. It's a simple thing, science. What is our health department saying? Let's follow the health department. Right? Within that context, deal with your constituency groups. Right? But do it on the basis where it's, it's, it's rock solid because it's the science of it. When we do this on a whim, we are saying that the science doesn't matter. Right? The science doesn't matter. And that to me, as a social science, as an academic senate, gets very frustrating. And we're doing this at the same time we are trying to encourage more face-to-face classes, right? We're making a major push to try to get more face-to-face classes. And you give these mixed signal to faculty on our, on our emails. They were just constant faculty and others being involved in masks and being involved in all of these different issues regarding dropping students who didn't get their vaccination. We really need to do it on the basis of science. And so I'll leave you with that and hope that in the next coming months that we work with the Board of Trustees as they go about looking for a new chancellor to come in next year. I hope that we can really begin to have a district that is consistent and that plans and engage with our faculty, our classified, our administrators and our students, and has the dialogue based upon some bedrock rather than on a, on a particular vocal constituency group. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. We'll go ahead and move to four point twelve, public communication.
Yes, ma'am. I have Anna Roy up. And friendly reminder, it is three minutes per individual speaker unless you cede your time to another person.
We can't hear you on the mic, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Witt. I'm a part-time faculty in the E S O L department at Laney College. And I didn't plan to speak tonight, but I am going to read a statement by a part-timer from Merritt College that I happen to agree with. Her name is Lisa K. Letzky. And this is a statement about healthcare for part-timers. And it starts here. "It really undermines my confidence in Peralta to know that while faculty are tackling the challenges of this first week of classes, the administration still has not confirmed the health and health insurance of part-timers. To know that you easily could have signed off on our health coverage and that it would be fully reimbursed caused the district nothing, but still you are stalling and trying to carve rights out of our contract in exchange. This makes me feel as if the district does not value our work. Please do the right thing and confirm part-time health coverage." Thank you.
Next, we have Steven Zetlin.
Hello, everybody, trustees, presidents. My name is Steven Zedlin. I am the Chair of the E S L, E S O L Department at Laney College. And the first thing I'd like to do is enter into the record this statement from C P F A, which is, "In his twenty-two, twenty-three budget, Newsom included a two-hundred-million-dollar increase to a fund from which the state's seventy-three local community college districts can obtain reimbursement for adjunct healthcare costs." That seems pretty straightforward to me. Now I'm going to read a statement from a part-time employee at College of Alameda. "Dear members of the Board, I have been a part-time employee at College of Alameda for four years. During that time, my lack of health insurance through Peralta has come at a very high cost. As a single person living with several chronic health issues, I currently pay almost double monthly income at Peralta for health insurance, which seems like a travesty. I think part-time faculty deserve to receive the same high-quality insurance as full-time employees, and I would like to see us get options for both Kaiser and P P O plans. There are no full-time professors in my program at College of Alameda. We've all had to struggle to pay insurance premiums in one way or another. My lack of employer-based insurance is something that often makes me pause when considering my future with the Peralta District. I stay because I love my work and I love the connections I make with students. But I think the district should do what it can to improve access to healthcare for all its workers, including part-time faculty. Thank you for your time, Felice." And now I'll just make a statement for myself. You know, I was thinking, if the government said to me, hey, here's some free money to cover your health insurance, I'd find it pretty hard to say no to that. And I'm wondering, what is stopping the administration of this district? I think it's a shame. And people who are making those decisions should feel ashamed for keeping our adjunct faculty from having the same healthcare benefits as full-time faculty. Thank you very much for your time.
Next, we have Susan Adrian.
You're going to have to come to the podium so we can hear, I can hear you, but Sasha can hear.
Who are you ceding your time to?
Well, I did a card.
She's ceding her time to Karen Panich, who has a card in already.
Hi. My name's Karen Panich, I'm a part-timer in the E S O L department at Laney. I spoke with you last month about the same topic, part-time healthcare, and I'm kind of disappointed that I have to be back here again. I thought maybe it was going to be resolved. We had a very encouraging email that said that it was going to be resolved a couple of weeks ago, and that didn't happen. So we're back again. I'm reading a statement from my colleague Patty Weissman, who's in the E S O L department. "My name is Patty Weissman, and I've been a part-timer in the E S O L department since two thousand and four. I am recovering from a second, from my second rotary cuff surgery, so I'm unable to attend the meeting in person. But I hope my words tonight can convince you to accept the free money from the state for part-timer healthcare. I've had Crohn's disease since the early nineties, so I had to choose the more expensive P P O light health plan instead of the more affordable Kaiser plan in order to keep my doctors. When I started, the cost of my plan was split fifty-fifty. When cost sharing for the P P O plan was eliminated, I began to pay fifteen hundred dollars a month. This is by far my biggest expense each month. I think it might go down to around nine hundred dollars a month with the most recent change. Still way too much, I'm sure you'd agree. I have always thought it unfair that my full-time colleagues' benefits are far superior to mine. I have the same qualifications as a full-timer, and since I've been teaching for over thirty years, much more experience than most faculty. When I heard about the bill signed by Newsom last year, I felt such relief that this debilitating financial burden could be eased. A hundred percent reimbursement, why would you not jump on it right away? In fact, I'm shocked and profoundly disappointed that Peralta has still not started the process to implement this. It makes us part-timers feel that you don't care about us. It's a pandemic and you are playing games with our lives. I have no many of you to refer to the Peralta family. Part-timers are the backbone of Peralta. We are the largest faculty group. We teach the most students. We want to feel valued like we are part of the family. Would you do this to an actual member, an actual family member? Refuse to accept money that would pay for a life-changing benefit? I don't think so. Please do the right thing and resolve this as soon as possible. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next, we have Noel Zacharhoff. I hope I announced that correctly.
He said that really well.
Thank you.
Hi, yes, Noel Fagerhoff. I am in the English Departments at Laney and Merritt College. I am adjunct, and I can't afford the healthcare option that's offered. So please, please do what you can to get the free money to the adjuncts for our healthcare coverage. And I'm here also to read a statement from an adjunct at College of Alameda. These are her words. "My name is Beth Rudolph, and I teach part-time at College of Alameda. It's my fourth year working in the college-to-career, C to C program, and I love my job. When I first started with Peralta in fall twenty nineteen, I quickly learned I was not eligible to participate in the district-provided healthcare system, since I taught less than forty percent. As such, my family utilized Covered California. Our Kaiser premiums increased every year, and we were paying over nineteen hundred dollars per month as recently as December twenty twenty-two. It was by far our largest monthly expense. I was ecstatic to learn that part-time faculty would be able to participate in cost sharing for healthcare beginning January first of this year. I quickly signed up, and we're now paying eleven fifty-four per month. While this is a significant saving for our family, it is still a tremendous cost. One of my kids has mental health challenges, and we spent over ten thousand dollars out of pocket." One of my kids has mental health challenges, and we spent over ten-thousand dollars out of pocket last year to get him additional support. And we haven't yet recovered financially. It would truly be life-changing for my family to have the entire cost of healthcare covered by the district. It would allow us to exhale and rest more easily, knowing that we wouldn't have to choose between providing the best care for our son while compromising other financial responsibilities. Please do the right thing and accept the free money from the state. Regards, Beth Rudolph. Thank you.
Next, we have Andrew Park.
Hi. Thank you, trustees and representatives. My name is Andrew Park. I teach physics at College of Alameda. I'm a full-time instructor here to speak in support of our part-time colleagues and for the healthcare for part-timers. I studied at College of Alameda as a part-timer in 2014. And when I was hired full-time, really the one thing that changed, was most impactful, was the healthcare coverage. Before that, I was eligible, and when I looked at how much it would have cost, it was simply cost prohibitive. And I, and when I talked to our part-time colleagues, most of them would like to participate in the health, in the, our healthcare coverage, but it cost prohibitive. And after years of advocacy on the, by our colleagues at CFT, by a number of community college advocacy organizations throughout the state, the state is giving us free money. Two-hundred-million dollars in what used to be only less than half, about half a million. And they, and it's, it's appalling that the district is dragging our fit to have actually paid less for what part-time healthcare costs. If the district agrees to meet all the requirements of the program, district will be spending actually less money to cover hundred percent of our part-time, part-time faculty's healthcare cost. So please do the right thing, take the free money from the state, and cover the healthcare costs of our part-timers. Thank you.
Next, we have Chris Widenbach.
Good evening, everyone. And I'd like to wish everyone a happy, healthy new year. I'm going to read a statement tonight from Margaret Lynn Crossman, CPA, who teaches accounting and tax at Laney College. Part-time teacher. I began working at Peralta in the fall of 2008. My class assignments have fluctuated from one class per semester to possibly two or three. Finally, one semester, I had the required number of classes to apply for healthcare. However, it was unaffordable. The cost of healthcare was at minimum seven-hundred dollars per month. There was no way I could afford to cover that out of my part-time salary. Then in early 2000, just before the pandemic, I required emergency services and was rushed to the hospital for a heart problem. I spent a couple of days in the hospital, underwent a procedure to stimulate my heart rhythm, and came home with a hospital bill of thousands of dollars, none of which was covered by my insurance, because I didn't have any. To this day, I am still hounded by vendors for this hospital bill. Plus, it has ruined my credit. Falk ambulance charged me over twenty-five-hundred dollars for the ambulance ride to the hospital. To this day, they still continue to harass me for this bill. It is disheartening that part-time instructors are reduced to being in this position, especially since some of us have the same credentials as our full-time colleagues. We just don't have the number of classes to qualify for insurance. Since part-time instructors are a majority compared to full-time instructors, and the people we serve are these students, one would think that you would make it an essential priority that part-time instructors have the necessary healthcare to take care of themselves, so they can best serve our students. Please make the necessary policy changes to ensure that part-time instructors receive affordable healthcare benefits. I was never so proud of Peralta, our board, and our administration as when we made the very humane choice to provide, this is me speaking for myself now. We reached part-time parity pay. That's, that was so legit, I don't even have words for it. We're, that, that's the best you can do. That's, that's the best, we're the best in the state in that regard. We should all be so proud of that, and I loved how many full-time faculty showed up to support that push. I think we'd have more people here if we were in the habit of coming to in-person meetings, or if it weren't the first week of the semester. But as a full-timer, I know, I don't know a single person, part-time or full-time, who doesn't want this. When I, I didn't even understand how the money would be reimbursed. That is, it's basketball season. I think it's a slam dunk. I'll leave it at that, and again, I wish you a good evening, and it's good to be back in three dimensions with y'all.
Next, we have John Holmes.
Hello, everyone. I hope you can all hear me. My name is John Holmes. I'm, I sometimes teach history at Merritt College, the proud home of the Black Panther Party. And I must say, when I got hired five years ago, having the opportunity to teach history at the home of the Black Panther Party was one of the happiest days of my life. I'm not currently teaching a lot. I'm not currently teaching at all, in fact, due to the fact that the downward spiral that's been going on at Peralta, which is an issue that really we need to seriously take up. But that's not what I came to talk to you about here today. We could talk about that in the future, and we need to do something about that. But I'm also, together with Karen Panich, who spoke, I'm also one of the two part-timer representatives on our executive council. And she represents the part-timers who have jobs, and I represent the growing number of part-timers who don't have classes. And I think that's the necessary role. And on Flex Day, we had a part, we had a part-time union committee meeting, as we usually do in January, and we had about twenty part-timers there. And neither I nor Karen, for different reasons, are relying on union, on union health, on, on our PFD healthcare. And so we didn't even know exactly what was being paid. So we went on, we went around the room and asked all the part-timers there, "Are you getting the, are you under this plan, and how much does it cost?" Not a single one of the twenty part-timers who were there was under the union plan. Most of them were undercover, Covered California, because, because they all says the same thing, we just can't afford it. And we've heard from the reports, the reasons why. The, we have a part-timer, you heard in the report, was paying sixteen-hundred dollars a month. That's absurd. When I was, I came here from Diablo Valley College. When I was at Diablo Valley College, teaching history there, I was paying about four-fifty, five-hundred dollars a month, and I thought that was a lot of money. Now, when I came here, I got a big pay increase, and I was very pleased about that. But I discovered that whereas at Diablo Valley College, was not famous for being ideal for, for part-timers, they were covering sixty-five percent of the cover coverage, whereas we only cover fifty percent there, unlike many other colleges, not just DVC. And I was shocked by that. So, basically, so what we're going on, that we have a situation in the negotiations, where my understanding is that essentially, the negotiators, I assume they reported this to you guys on the Board of Trustees, fully, if they haven't, I should hope that they do, that the stance taken by the negotiators is, we'll only give this, we'll only give you this free money, which we don't have to pay for, if the union makes all sorts of concessions. And they have a long list of concessions to be made in negotiations. Well, there's a situation here that not only is this free money, which would not cost Peralta a dime, in fact, Peralta would come out ahead, because you do have a certain number of part-timers who are under the union health plan, and if this deal is accepted, every dime currently being paid by Peralta would be paid by the state. And in fact, there's even a deadline here, because how much money Peralta gets, can only be after, after June of this year, that amount of money, as I understand it, will go down. So it is utterly fiscally irresponsible not to accept this deal as soon as possible, and is incredibly fiscally irresponsible, and I'm sure our negotiating committee would never accept that, to make any concessions to Peralta in return for free money. And in fact, if the negotiators stay there to the end and don't accept this by June, Peralta loses money. I don't think that's what you guys on the, on the board, I don't think you guys want to see Peralta lose money. You want to see Peralta benefit, right? I mean, so, on that basis, I strongly urge you to make sure that this deal is accepted as soon as possible. Thank you.
Next, we have Jennifer Shinoski, and Jeff Sinseria ceded his time to her. She has a total of six minutes.
Thank you, Sasha. Thank you so much. Good evening. It's nice to see you all. So obviously, part-time healthcare is really important to our members. And I don't, I don't know that any of us haven't seen somebody that doesn't have insurance and has been really crippled by debt as a result of not having access to insurance. Healthcare costs are through the roof. My own little brother, I'll tell you a little personal story. My own little brother got out of the military and was quickly diagnosed with testicular cancer. He's fine now, but he was lucky enough to have contracted it overseas so that the millions of dollars in healthcare were not given over to him and were covered by the government. We've just gone through a global pandemic where we know the importance of access to high-quality healthcare, right? Many of us wear masks because we're concerned about our health or the health of those around us. Healthcare is a no-brainer, right? I mean, we should have single-payer healthcare in the state and in this country. This is the fifth-largest economy in the world. The least we can do in this room is accept free money from the state to provide healthcare, health insurance to our part-time faculty. Our part-time faculty are the largest number of single group of employees in the district. The state has set aside two-hundred-million dollars for this purpose. At least five other districts, including some really large ones like San Diego and Los Rios, have already availed themselves of this, of this deal. PFT has agreed that if that money is decreased, or disappeared, or insufficient, we will immediately renegotiate. It is no cost to the district. In fact, as Andrew Park said, it's going to save you money because you're currently paying out of pocket and won't get a hundred percent reimbursement. We're not asking the district to give us anything. There's nothing, it's not a giveaway. It's free money from the state. As Chris Widenbach mentioned, a few years ago, you did the right thing and passed part-time parity. This is the next step in that, and the state has given you a pathway, has made it absolutely free. Everybody sitting around this table has access to Peralta health insurance. We all can go to the doctor anytime we want, for little to no cost. All we're asking is that you do the same, afford the same to part-time faculty. Don't tie it to a bunch of other things that have nothing to do with part-time faculty healthcare. We're supposed to engage in interest-based bargaining, not positional bargaining, which means it is really against our contract for the district to be trading free money from the state for part-time healthcare for other issues that have nothing to do with it. So one last time, I really urge this board to take the free money from the state, do the right thing in the wake of a global pandemic, and provide the same healthcare to our part-timers as you all currently have access to. Thank you.
And that is it for public comments.
Great. Thank you, everyone. We will now move to four point thirteen, Chancellors' Reports.
I'd like to have a point of privilege to recognize our departing General Counsel Royal Roberts, and then I will turn it over to the presidents for short reports. They will follow in alphabetical order with BCC, College of Alameda, Laney College, and then, last but not least, as I always say, Merritt College and Dr. Johnson. So if you would, President Delphine Polk. You have to get up and go up.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do.
Oh, okay. Is it, okay, it is working. I have to ask if you can hear me, because I'm sure everybody can. So as some of you know, Royal has been with the district, and I'm going to let President, President Delphine Polk read it, so I won't speak it before you read it. But we wanted to just give a short recognition to him for all the work that he's done, and I'm going to pass the microphone over to.
To me. So, whereas Royal L. Roberts began his career with the Peralta Community College District as an intern in the Office of General Counsel in 2010, and has held various leadership roles within the district over the last fourteen years, culminating with his appointment to the Office of General Counsel in 2022, and whereas Royal graduated from the University of Texas at San Antonio with a bachelor's degree in business administration, attended Our Lady of the Lake University, graduating with a master's in business administration, and successfully earned a JD with distinction, with a specialization certificate in business law from Golden Gate University, and whereas Royal has received notable recognition for his service and dedication by receiving the Rose Elizabeth Byrd Award for professionalism and integrity, named after former Chief Justice Rose Byrd of the California Supreme Court, as well as the Golden Gate University School of Law's Paul S. Jordan Achievement Award for service and contribution awarded to graduating students who exemplify community service and contribution, and whereas Royal's service to his community is demonstrated by his work as a commissioner on the Alameda County Human Relations Commission, his participation on the Alameda County Democratic Central Committee, his service on the Board of Directors for the Martin Luther King Junior Freedom Center, his prior work in a law firm focusing on employment and civil rights. He is also an active member of the Omega Psi Phi fraternity. You've been busy, Royal. Now, be it proclaimed that the governing board of the Peralta Community College District expresses its immense gratitude and appreciation to Mr. Royal L. Roberts for his leadership, partnership, accomplishments, and commitment to the Peralta District through his efforts, his efforts have helped PCCD elevate its status in the community so that is once again a beacon of learning and public service to the citizens of Alameda County. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Wow, you guys did your background. You did your, your homework. I would just like to say thank you to everyone in the district, to the Board of Trustees. As it was mentioned, I came here as an intern, came back as classified staff, a manager, and up through administration. And the only thing I would like to say is that I believe that when we work together as a as a district, we are much stronger than when we work apart. And again, I just want to thank especially the Chancellor and everyone for the opportunity that allowed me to build the skills to reach new opportunities. And I will never forget the people, the place that Peralta has helped me become over the years. So thank you. Thank you.
I said, could we get one picture without the mess? So we have a before and a short after, a short after. Oh. Thank you.
Berkeley City College.
Good evening, President Delphine Polk, Chancellor Jackson, trustees, colleagues, and community members. It's my pleasure to offer some brief remarks on behalf of Berkeley City College. As was shared in the earlier reports from Academic Senate, Classified Senate, we are in the start of the first week of the spring semester, day two, to be precise. And I want to begin with just sharing a little bit of enrollment data. BCC, as of this morning, we are at 82% of our FTES target. Our target is just shy of 1,400 students, 1,396. And as of today, we have 1,142 FTES. Our headcount today for students enrolled at BCC is 5,878 students. That's 400 more than the same day last year. And that's 200 more than just yesterday. Yesterday, we were at 5,644. So I want to offer my greatest gratitude and appreciation for the tireless work that's happening on behalf of Enrollment Services and Outreach, our classified professionals, our faculty, for the ways they're engaging and communicating with students, our student ambassadors. It is it is an all-team effort to remind the community that we are back, that we are ready for them, and I'm so grateful for the way the community has pulled together. The we received news last week on a second point that Berkeley City College is being recognized as Mesa-certified. So we will be one of the 61 colleges in the state this year that's going to receive $1.4 million over five years. We are not alone in this. Some of our sister colleges are also going to be joining this effort, and we are excited for what that's going to offer for students. And in closing, I just want to share something that comes from our educational master plan work. So as a result of the charrette that was hosted at Laney College, our Berkeley City College Career Education, our CTE team, was invited to give a presentation at the Career Education Pathways Summit that was hosted at UC Berkeley. There were over 80 participants that had the K-20 partnerships. And Dean Chris Lewis offered that presentation on all the CTE programs and the pathways in CTE. And that was as a result of community coming together in November for the charrette. And I just thought that it was important for you all to know that. That concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you.
Chancellor Jackson, trustees, colleagues, students, and members of community. I'll keep my report very short today in the interest of time. President Roberto Gonzalez told what I wanted to share with you, that we had a great flex day. He described it in better ways than I could. It was really interesting to see classified professionals equally involved as were the faculty administrators and students. Enrollment is much better than last spring, so we have a 14% increase from spring to spring. Still a way to go. And several activities on campus at COA to invite students, provide all the wraparound services, basic needs, Tasty Tuesdays and collaboration between student services, academic services, admin, and students. And that concludes my report.
Good evening, Chancellor Jackson, President Delphine Polk, members of the governing board, colleagues in education, valued students, and respected community members. We'll just give a brief summary of my board report this evening. And like President Garcia, I'm pleased to announce that Laney College will be the recipient of a $1.4 million math engineering science achievement grant or to start a MESA program as well. It's exciting news. On the enrollment front, although our schedule is 8% smaller than a year ago, we have 10% more students and 11% more of our seats are filled than a year ago. And that's exciting, and it's really a tribute to everyone at Laney College just for the tireless work they do. At Laney College, our employees show up. They really do. Over the last two Saturdays, many have come out, turned out to promote our One Stop Saturdays, serving at least 300 students from the community who came and got all their registration taken care of. Additionally, on Saturday, we were privileged on Friday and Saturday, Laney College had a booth at the Lunar Festival in Oakland Chinatown. And on Saturday, the executive team was pleased to give remarks and wish everyone a Happy New Year. And obviously, the next day, there was the sobering news about what took place in Monterey Park. And reflecting on it, I guess I'm reminded that we need to continue to do what we've been doing, provide education to our community because it's a powerful tool. I also wanted to say that I really appreciated the board's study session a couple weeks ago, particularly former Laney colleague and current trustee Louis Quinlan, who asked about a part of my job as president, which is to chair the Northern Alameda Collective for Adult Education. In March, the board will be receiving, hearing, scheduled a presentation from Director Shamilla Johnson. But in advance of that, I took some time, and as did Director Johnson and Ann Gonzalez, to provide you with the three-year plan for the work that's being done in the collective. In addition to that, we collaborated to provide you all with an executive summary. It contains information that tells you that, for example, last fall in non-credit and adult education, more than 4,500 students were served. Or an enrollment size that's roughly 45% of that of what Laney College was last fall. So it's a big number. Additionally, on this executive summary, you have a list of all the educational partners, five of them in addition to the four Peralta colleges, as well as the seven allowable programming uses that we have through the collective and that are being used and reported on. There's some additional information on the backside of this executive summary as well. But I think upcoming meetings in the spring are going to be exciting, especially as you hear about the Adult Education Collective. And with that, I'll conclude my report this evening.
Trying to silence me. Good evening, President Delphine Polk, board, chancellor, colleagues, students, and community. I'll keep my remarks short as well, but I can't leave without telling you about something that happened on Wednesday, January 11th, when we came together for the relaunch of the Street Scholars Program. And it was, suffice it to say, was an absolute success. For those of you who don't know, the Street Scholars is a program that focuses on peer mentoring and student support services to promote the academic success of formerly incarcerated students. That night, we were also able to honor the memory of Dr. Bill Love, Professor Ron Moss, not only reflections from their colleague, Professor Melvin Newton, brother of Huey Newton, but also with recollections of, shared by those who were part of the peer mentor team. But probably what was most special is that we had Ms. Cynthia Moss, Ronald Moss's widow, who cut the ceremonial ribbon to officially open the site that changed so many lives. And with that, we opened the newly renamed Love Moss Center for Reentry and Empowerment. So very, very happy about that. Thank you. It's a wonderful way to honor their memories. And just to say a bit about our enrollment, as we commenced the first week of the spring semester, our enrollment picture is coming into sharper focus. The Spring is Free Six for Six campaign, coupled with our district-supported marketing efforts. So thank you, Mark Johnson. They've yielded some pretty encouraging results. Candidly, we experienced a drop in enrollment last last fall, last semester, based on year-to-year comparisons. But we've reversed that decline and are pretty much we're above the spring 2022 numbers when compared year-to-year. We currently have an enrollment of 9,741 as of this morning, a headcount of 6,207, and FTES of 1,204. And that may not mean anything, but I pulled the initial numbers on Friday. So this was before our big, our big spring express enrollment. So I'm not going to attribute all of the growth to that Saturday enrollment program that we had, where we had the Welcome Center and counseling and A&R and financial aid and orientation. But just over the weekend, increase of 1,050 in enrollment, increase of 400 in headcount, and an increase of 125 in FTES just in those three days. So our train is on track and on schedule. So with that, I'll turn it over to the chancellor.
Thank you, presidents. We appreciate your updates. I'll turn it back over to, unless anyone has any questions, turn it back over to President Delphine Polk.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to presentations. Update 5.1, update by WestEd on the Strategic Educational Master Planning Process. I believe we have some presenters.
President Delphine Polk, I'd just like to introduce our partners at WestEd. They'll introduce themselves, but they have been supporting our work. If you were at the charrette back in November, you saw these incredible women who led us and facilitated the event. And they're here to provide an update regarding our progress as well as the rest of the timeline.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Lupita Cortez-Alcalan, the Director of Education Policy and Outcomes for WestEd. Good evening, President Delphine Polk, trustees, Chancellor Jackson, college presidents, who we've had a delight getting to know and partner with. We're here to provide an update on the Peralta Community College Educational Master Plans and District Strategic Plan. And if we could pull up our presentation. That'd be great.
One second. I am working on it right now. My apologies.
No worries. Next slide, and we're on target. So I'm really, I'm glad and delighted to be joined by a fantastic team here with me today. Co-leading this project with me is Dr. Kelsey Crossen and in partnership, Dr. Rachel Anthropus and Alexandria Gonzalez, who's not with us today. But we have our senior advisor from WestEd, the Director of Post-Secondary Pathways and Economic Mobility, Randy Tillery, who you all might know, who's also part of this, part of our team. And we're excited to do this together. Next slide. I'll be very brief on this slide, just really quick. WestEd, as you might know, is a national leader on research, development, and service. But I'm just going to point out something that we share in common with Peralta Community College District, and that's our commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion. It's central to our work to advance equitable opportunities, to increase the well-being, and promote positive outcomes for all children, youth, and adults and families. Next slide. And so I know that there's a couple new trustees. And as a reminder, WestEd was contracted to partner with the Peralta Community College District and the Community College Presidents in the creation of actionable, equity-focused, and data-driven college educational master plans and district strategic plan. What's new and different and unique about the way Peralta is going about it is that the college education master plans are the basis for the district strategic plan and that the college and district plans will be aligned. The college education master plans are aligned, will be aligned to each other. And there's going to be, and there's an alignment process that we're working to develop along with the district strategic plan and college EMPs that can be replicated for future years as well. And now I have the pleasure of transitioning to Dr. Kelsey Crossen to talk about the approach and our progress thus far.
Great. Thank you, Lupita, and good evening, everyone. I'm Kelsey Crossen. I'm a senior manager at WestEd, helping to lead this project. I'm also a daughter of Oakland and continue to live here. So this this work is meaningful to me, you know, both personally and professionally. So if you could move to the next slide, Sasha, I can run through our approach and some of the progress that we've made to date. So we've been providing support around facilitation and coordination of college advisory committees. They go by different names. We're meeting weekly with colleges and their teams to advance the work on their EMPs. We're also meeting with the college presidents and Dr. Droger biweekly to share progress, share successes, questions, ideas, parts of the EMPs themselves to stimulate ideas. So that's been a really fruitful opportunity to collaborate. We, those meetings are ongoing and will continue through the duration of the project. We also completed an environmental scan. Have been working closely with college IR and district and presented those data at the charrette and also individually by college for their service areas. And I think those also stimulated really important conversations at the college level. Several of you attended the charrette, and so that was also a part of our work. So it's good to see you all again. We planned and facilitated the district charrette, which Rachel will speak to a bit more. We created a template, both the design of the plans themselves as well as an outline for what each of the plans will include so that there is alignment across college plans and with the district plan. We are providing support, accountability to make sure that the writing is ongoing and moving ahead smoothly. We'll also support some copy editing and all of that to make sure we have beautiful reports, EMPs at the end. We, and part of that is this work essentially providing project management support. And I mentioned before, quality assurance, which will, most of which will take take place at the end, but working closely with the college writing teams to ensure the best possible plans. Next slide shows the timeline. You can see we kicked off the work back in July. I mentioned already that we've been having these ongoing meetings with college teams. We've completed the template and quantitative and qualitative data collection and analysis, hosted the charrette back on November 10th. And then what's coming next are the draft plans. So because the district plan will be informed by the college plans, the date for the draft college plans comes first in March and then the district strategic plan in April, and all of them finalized by May as they go through the college participatory governance process and also with informed by all of your input. So with that, I will turn it to Rachel.
Thank you, Kelsey. I'm Rachel Anthropus. I am also part of this team that's been supporting the colleges. I am also a longtime resident and a part-time instructor at College Alameda Political Science. I am a member of this group in informing and supporting the work moving forward. I want to speak specifically about the charrette, and thank you all for those that were able to be there. I appreciate the trustees that were able to make the time to be present that day. On November 10th, as Kelsey discussed a bit, there was a very well-attended charrette. We had over 150 folks that were able to attend and a very wide, diverse group of people that were able to join us that day. folks that were able to attend and a very wide diverse group of people that were able to join us that day, including folks from the K-12 district office that all the colleges have representatives as well. We had workforce partners and, and community members that were able to be there that day. Within the day, we had two rounds of input sessions that were focused on strategic priorities that had been identified by the district, including K-16 pathways, sustainable and healthy college communities, strategic workforce partnerships and improving community and college safety. Each of those input sessions were led by one of our talented and inclusive presidents. And so they were able to facilitate a conversation with the community that wanted to give input in that area. There was also an available input written session or written input as well that was available for folks that were not able to speak or wanted to say something in addition to what was said verbally in the meetings. We had a, a really nice lunch at Laney. It definitely marked a moment of change in terms of like my experience post pandemic, which was a really broad, open conversation, face to face, very dynamic day and conversations that we're able to have that we're intending to inform the EMPs and the strategic priorities of the district moving forward. And then I just want to say one more thing. The next slide is around the survey. So after the charrettes, we were able to distribute a survey to get additional input. If you could answer the next slide.
Sasha, thank you.
And this was intended to ensure we had sufficient voice in what the parties might be moving forward. By far and away, the, the K-16 partnerships were, was number one, followed by developing sustainable and healthy communities at colleges and communities, the strategic workforce area, and then the improving public safety. What, we didn't have a representative sample of the survey of data, but we did mirror the, the attendance in the actual sessions. So the K-16 had far and away the, the, the largest attendance in person. And we felt like the priorities were echoing those same priorities. I think we're going to move to questions.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have some questions. And I raised some of these same concerns at the charrette. In your presentation at the charrette, I thought you did an incredible job of portraying the, the lack of economic development, the lack of economic opportunity that was tied strongly to access to education. What I did not see and what I have not seen and discussed is how we address that problem, how we address those shortcomings in our community through our community college system. One of the things that this report around the adult education brings up is the fact that in our district, popular, our population of our district, we have seventy one thousand individuals that have not achieved a high school diploma or GED. We have probably what? Three thousand people a year graduating from our local high schools, maybe a little bit more, maybe thirty five hundred? We cannot grow with thirty five hundred people graduating from our high schools. We have to move into our community and address the needs of those seventy one thousand people. I don't see this adult education plan as a part of, of our master plan. I don't see talk about ability to benefit, which is a plan that can actually give those students, once they're enrolled in our programs and enrolled in CTE programs, they can give them access to financial aid. I don't see programs that we now have in California around concurrent enrollment as part of our strategy. And I think if we just rely on the guided pathways on the, you know, K-12 to community college pathways, we, we will not grow. We will continue to shrink. I just looked at the figures in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, we had pretty close to nineteen thousand FTS. Since then, we've had a forty one percent drop in our FTS and it's going to continue to decline because our demographics, based on the cost of living here, is not going to provoke, promote families and young people having children and, you know, Oakland's considering shutting down more schools. All of our districts are getting smaller. So I think we need to address, you know, that population, those seventy one thousand people that, that don't have opportunity that are stuck without education, stuck in, if they're working in low wage jobs because of their lack of education and use the power of our career education plans, the power of the new legislation and recognition of the state in addressing adult education populations and, you know, make that part of our plan.
Do we have any other questions, colleagues? Go ahead, trustee Yannis. Trustee Reese.
You sure you don't have a question? Thank you. And thank you for the charrette. That was actually very interesting. And many of my colleagues to my right, my left talked about how, how fruitful it was to have the discussions afterwards and to have these discussions with individuals that we don't normally occupy space with in a room and have these discussions about very important topics. So my question has to do with the slide regarding the survey. And there may be three questions associated with that. The first is, in what way will the survey information manifest in the EMP? Like, how are we using the survey? Second, when did we take the survey? Because I don't recall when. And third, even though it's representative of the audience that registered or did, did get there or did attend, I think part of it that makes it a little challenging or problematic to me, depending on how this manifests in the EMP is that there are so few people, twenty one out of the hundred and fifty that were there. And so I don't know if it's representative of the priorities as they should be ranked in the EMP. But then again, I'm not sure how you're going to use it to the EMP. So if you could just let us know or, or do, or do you know at this point?
Sure. I don't think we have a clear plan. That's part of discussions that we'll be having with Dr. Droker and others. And also our welcome, you know, your input as well. The survey was sent out twice, I believe, through Peralta to all, not just those who attended, but those who were invited. And there was a question on the survey asking whether or not the respondents had actually attended the charrette or not. I believe most of them had that actually responded. So it was sent out twice after it, yeah, unfortunately have a low response rate. I think we, we were unsure of whether to share these survey data for the very reason you raised. There are so few respondents, but because it mapped so closely onto the number of people just showing interest in a particular topic at the shred and how many people were in the room. We thought it was worth, it was one data point to share with all of you. So I don't, there's nothing to suggest that any of these are not a priority for your internal and external communities. But it does give some additional information. So I don't know. The, and so it certainly, it likely will show up in the district plan. And I don't know if you want to add to that at all either, but we are still in discussion about exactly how to weave these types of data in.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think I have anything else to add at this moment. I mean, I, one of the things that we'll see how this, how this plays out is the colleges are also doing focus groups with students, faculty administrators, classified professionals. And so weaving that information together and triangulating it, it's going to be really important.
And I would also note that the input sessions were focused, I wouldn't say primarily, but we were asking the question about the role the district can play in those areas, which is a different question than, than is occurring at the colleges. So for instance, with the K-16 partnerships that might be around concurrent enrollment or dual enrollment, what is the policy or, or procedures that could help ease those things that, that the role the district has differently from the college? So it was a slightly different conversation. And I know, being part of Alameda and Merit's conversations, those ones are a little bit more nuanced and a bit more focused on the the college community and the kind of culture that's happening at each college.
Trustee Gonzalez, win.
Thank you. And I think maybe this question is more directed at the Chancellor and Dr. Droker to try to help the board understand the broader planning process. So we've got, we've got work going on on the campuses. We've got West Ed's doing its work. And then we've got a lot of perspective input from people who are probably a lot harder to reach. So trustee Quinlan, you know, references seventy thousand, you know, people who could benefit. But how do we, how do we tap into that? So that as we do master planning, it's really geared towards people who aren't currently engaged in the colleges, but could really benefit, could enrich the district as well. So maybe if we understood a little bit better the broader master plan process and then kind of where we're going.
I'll tell you my idea.
Thank you.
Whenever I participated in educational master planning, strategic planning, it mutates based upon the environment and the culture of the institution that you're working with. The way that I did when I was at Chibou, the only component that is the same as the charrette. Because I really felt that we needed, we, this district needed to reach out to the community and embrace our community. As we move forward into the next phase, because now we're doing the data gathering, the colleges are coming up with their plans. The next phase is going to involve the board and we don't have the answers that we come up with those answers together. But you have to have the data and the input from the colleges in order to trigger the discussion. Because that's kind of the basis. So the ideas that you threw out, you know, Vice President Quinlan, absolutely, we will have. The other thing that stalled some of the work at the, the district and is we want to have all of the trustees involved in that. We need to have all seven involved in what we're doing so that it's a collective voice, whether that individual goes on and gets elected or not. I still feel that we need that voice, that other voice representing that district, that area. So that's the next step. Once the presidents and get theirs kind of like a rough drafts, we will see if there are any themes that emerge and that will be the data analysis that West Ed will help us with. Those themes, just like the ones that have already emerged, we will flush out and we will try to address not just what we're doing now, but where do we want to go? You know, that's what your educational and strategic master plans are. They are just mapping what you've done. But it's your future. Where, where do we see ourselves? How do we integrate ourselves? What are our shortcomings? What are things that we do really, really well that we need to keep doing well and foster? And so that's the next step and that will involve the entire board and as part of that process as well as the colleges. So that's how I've done it. That's how I see it. I think that's mirroring, you know, I worked with Randy Tillery, he was here. I don't know. Oh, there he is standing up back there. You moved on me. And that's how we've done it. That's how they did it at Contra Costa. That's how I did it at Chibou Las Pecitas. And I think that will mirror, but it'll be different though, because we're different than those other colleges. Does that help?
If I can follow up.
May I add?
Please.
The chancellor, you know, one of the things I think that we're not, we're not visualizing here is we're really focusing on what we heard at the charrette. But remember, the whole point of our educational master planning and strategic planning processes is to find out if we're meeting our mission. So it's aligned to our goals. So Vice President Quinlan mentioned the, the, the population we may not be reaching. Well, one of the parts of the template of the colleges is enrollment. And so talking about those strategies and enrollment. So you're only really seeing one part of this planning process. And so maybe, and I don't have them, all the goals in my head, but we aligned it to the board goals and the college goals. And I, I really want to give the chancellor credit because she really flipped this. We're doing something we've never done before. And honestly, I don't think anyone in the States done before, which is a lot of time district plans drive college plans. But she has flipped this. She's having the colleges drive the, the college plans, help align to the district plan. Because that's where the action is. That's where the magic is. And so by embedding the district plan in each of the college plans in a, in an aligned way and by operationalizing how, how the district supports individually the colleges as well as collectively, I think that's where we are going to see some real strong activities towards, are we meeting our mission?
That's actually kind of exactly what I was looking for is like, all right, the tail isn't wagging the dog here. We've got the campuses and the expertise grounded in those campuses. And I think one of the things I said at our retreat was I think one of the things that's unique about this district, and you know, I can't speak for all community college districts in the state, but we have people like Lewis or Chris Widenbach who live in the district and teach here. And in a lot of districts, that's just not the case. People are from all over the state commuting in, but because we're so blessed to have such an incredible area, people want to live here. Now, they can't necessarily afford to live here right now, which is an additional issue. But I think it's tapping into your staff and faculty who are really not only the discipline experts, but also the community experts. And sure, we are representative of the community. We are the official democratically elected representatives of our communities. Sure. But I'd be a fool not to rely on the people who work in this district to really understand so intimately the day to day lives of, of students and would be students. So I'm looking forward to that process rolling out. I understood this was just a portion of it. And that's why I was asking about, excuse me, about context. And so I'm, I'm excited to hear that. I'm looking forward to a more, a richer engagement process. And I hope that when we get to that board engagement process, it's not done in a room that looks this empty. God, I'm doing what Dr. J does. I'm hitting the microphone. I'll put it down, put my hands down. I'm hoping that we'll have an opportunity to actually, you know, have the shared governance constituencies richly represented as part of that interaction. You know, I, I, I think our president, the academic senate was saying, look, there are ten plus one areas where we, you primarily rely on us. And I'd like to see that kind of interaction. That's me personally. And I don't know about the rest of my colleagues here, but I would find that really beneficial to inform my thinking and feedback to, to that planning process. Thank you.
I do know trustee Gonzalez, you and that, you know, these, these plans are represented widely across the campus with participation, faculty, classified professionals, students and administration. There, they will be going through the participatory governance process at each of the campuses before coming to you. We're going to be doing two reads in May for you with these plans. So, and I also think our enrollment academy will help to, in April, will also help with that discussion as well. So it's an iterative process and, and you know, there's no perfect plan. But I think it's, it's something that we will find that the goals are not only aspirational, but we're also achievable and measurable. And I think collectively the board will be very proud of the products that they will see.
Thank you. I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ellen.
Okay, let's go ahead and move to five point two, the permanent chancellor search process. I think Dr. Miles is here with us, I believe, in person.
Hi.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Dr. Miles, for making the trek.
Dr. Benjamin is also, I believe, joining us via teleconference.
She is with us.
Great.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. B.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry, I can't be there in person. But Cindy's going to be handling the majority of the presentation. I just want to say before she starts that we did quite a bit of work with you last week. And as a result of that work, we're back to share some things with you. And there are three items on your agenda that we want you to take a look at. And Cindy will walk you through these. We made the changes to BP twenty four thirty one transfer selection. We have there in the agenda. We have, uh, there in the agenda for you. The copy with the track changes and what it looks like, uh, without the track changes. We just wanted to run that by you again before Dr. Jackson takes it out to PGC for them to start their review process, which we think will take at least thirty days. The other item there is the job description. We'd like for you to review that to see if you want to make any changes to it. Uh, it, it is there as it exists now. And then the third is the one we spent the most time on since we left you. And we, we think we heard everything you said. So we ended up giving you three iterations simultaneously uh, for a timeline, one in which the new chancellor would start September first. One in which the new chancellor would start November first and a third uh, with the start date of January first, twenty twenty-four. And so Cindy will walk you through each of those in the order in which they're in your agenda and in which I just listed them out. So thank you very much.
So thank you all. And so if we could pull up BP twenty-four thirty-one and as it's coming up, I think I need to say congratulations on kicking off a great spring term. It sounds, it sounds like you're really doing a great job and, and it's wonderful to have people back and hear about enrollment increases. Congratulations. That's huge. That's huge. And the EMP work that you're taking on. Another enormous project that you're doing at the same time. And I'm understanding the timeline. Uh, am I correct that I hear that it's, you're aiming for May to get this done? So, and I, I bring that up in the context of this next, uh, this task before you and considering your chancellor search. And it's, I think it's excellent to have that groundwork going with your ed master plan. You have your clear direction in place. That's going to be a nice undergirdment for looking at bringing in a new chancellor. So the board policy twenty-four thirty-one. You were able to see, I don't know, maybe we want to see the red line version or do you have? I guess the question before you to our trustees, did we, is this correct? Did we capture the changes you asked for? That's really all we're looking for from you tonight. Do we need to? How would you like to go about answering that question, President Delphin Polk?
Colleagues, do we have anything to add? Any questions or concerns? Go ahead, Vice President Quinlan.
So I've gotten quite a bit of, uh, feedback on the issue of the three trustees being on both the search committee and the final committee.
Uh huh.
Um, and I am still a little bit confused around the reasoning for that and I feel there's a problem with being able to be on a screening committee where you have one sets to come out of there with one set of knowledge and then you walk across the room. And suddenly you're supposed to forget all of that and not relay that information to everybody else on the board. It's, it's almost uh, it's like you're asking somebody to perform a mind trick or something as opposed to, uh, realistically what happens with people. And I just see issues with all kinds of conflicts around that. And that's, that's many of the people that talk to me about this were concerned about that one aspect of it. And I understand why we did it, but I also understand the issues with it. And I guess my question is, how much of a how, how common is that practice in other hiring committees?
Thank you for the question. And it's understandable whenever, if it's a change in your district from what you had been accustomed in the past. We're seeing this as more common in the last several searches that we have done. This has been the common practice and what we're, what we're seeing is that it's actually helping the board come to its decisions by having this liaison of of insights from a screening committee perspective. So you have, you're not just understanding that perspective of the candidates, you're having a greater understanding of the work of the screening committee and how they come to their decisions. And I don't think that in the experiences I've had, and I want Dr. Benjamin to, because she's had a lot more experience than I have, discuss this, there's never asking anyone or trustee to forget what happened formerly. It is, it is simply that you have a different role in each of these settings.
And I might add here that you've had trustees sit in, uh, to be in this position with, uh, committees and they might want to speak to how it worked for them, but it gives the, um, the trustees, as Cindy said, an opportunity to see from both perspectives, because you have to remember that this is the board's hire. And then you also have to remember, Cindy, if you scroll down to the bottom. In this process, uh, before we made these changes, trustees were not there. And there was a point at which uh, toward the end trustees could pull up individuals and you decided in the last meeting that you would remove that.
Yeah, just a little bit. And I think you'll see that section. Go up just a little bit more and you can see where it's the part that's struck from what was formerly D and is now E. So where, you know, my perspective of what I'm seeing that it's the benefit to search processes where we're seeing trustees involved at the screening committee level is that it builds trust among the trustees, among the larger board. In the, the finalists that are being brought to the board for the final decision. There have been circumstances in, in previous searches where that was not the case, where the board was uncomfortable with the candidates that were brought to them to decide from. And thus I think is what is reflected in the former policy that says it, we're, we want to, we have, we were, the former policy said that the board would exercise the right to ask the screening committee to go back in and pull more people in. That to me says we don't trust what they did. So it's building trust in the process as much as having multiple perspectives, I think, trustee Quinlan. But it's your decision, obviously.
Yeah. And I would also add that the discussion we had on that portion of the board policy or AP was really enlightening because at the end of the day, what the writers of that board policy or what the board had done was they allowed themselves that out, which really kind of defeated the whole process to begin with and cultivated a distrust. So I feel like right from the get-go, we talked about this at length and we talked about the necessity of let, building trust on the part of, um, the search committees and the process and making sure that what happens at the end of it is not something that at the end of the day, the board can kind of just pluck out, extract and change. And so um, I thought that that was such an enlightening portion of our conversation. And I think that this allows a process to work, but also at the same time, um, allows us to do, and I've been looking at the other community colleges, what other community colleges are also doing. And maybe at a certain point, and I know that you've done it already, but could you reiterate the benefits of having board members on the committee? I know you did it a couple of weeks ago, but let's, let's just hear that again.
Certainly. Dr. Benjamin, did you want to go over that?
Oh, yes. Well, there I have to emphasize that it's the board's process and in that role as a committee member, it's a level playing field. There's no rank in the room. Trustees typically don't talk a whole lot. They get to participate, score and all of that. But because it's their search, they get to see at the, at those two levels, well, and the paper screening too, at all the levels, what the pool looks like. They, they, they witnessed that and it, and that's important because they're the responsible party. You are the responsible entity for hiring that position. And I think it's, it's your right to do that if you choose to, and it's not a bad decision. Because you want to make sure that you are making a good choice and that you are participating at every level of the process.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow.
Where in the process that you've covered here? Do we sell the Peraldo Community College District as a choice of, uh, top talent to come in to be a chancellor and leader and mentor of? How is that done? I don't, I, I don't see it.
The, it's a wonderful question. The, this policy is really just describing the parameters. It's like the structure, the rules by, by which you will conduct the search. The actual promotion of the position comes through the search process that is you know, beyond the scope of, this is like the rules of the road. How you're going to do it structurally, but then the implementation piece comes with the building of the, the position profile. The work that we do and that we do in collaboration with human resources and the outreach, in the advertising, in the vetting, the pre-vetting, the informal vetting of of cultivating a rich pool. And I think tacitly, it also is in the trust that you convey in your process, how trustworthy this board is, how trustworthy the district is. The stability of a district often in your public perception speaks volumes to candidates who are looking at these positions across the country.
Thank you.
Trustee, honest?
Uh, yes, uh, I would like to go back to, um, trustee Quinlan's point. It, it's not the fact that somebody's wiping their, their brain clean. It's more along the lines of putting a trustee possibly in a bind because they may have forgotten or conflated what's confidential, what's not, and then accidentally saying something in a meeting and they don't want to do that to themselves. I think that's what basically he was trying to say. And I just want to add a second note, I believe in the last conversations regarding trust on the flip side. Uh, it may show that we distrust the screening committee as uh, sort of watchdogs or security guards kind of, um, leaning in and listening in on what's happening prior to it coming to us. So I just want to, and I'm still sort of going back and forth in my mind. I just want to add to, uh, Louis's, uh, point, or sorry, trustee.
I think, I, I think all of those are possibilities, but I don't think that's the board's intention to to, to use the process in that way. Um, and as I said, some trustees is, and they can't wipe their minds clean of anything. But they're professionals. You have to maintain confidentiality of anything you discuss in your closed session. You are accustomed to doing that. And if you don't know how to do that, you don't need to be a board member. I mean, that's just, they can't slip. That, that it's just not what you do a, as a board member. And that breaches the process, we'd have to throw it out and start over. And anybody in that room could make that mistake. And a human resources could find out or or we could, somebody could report it to us, what's happening. And that's a result of these quote unquote slips. And, uh, Dr. McKenna, you might want to speak to this as well.
No, I agree. That could happen, anyone, that could happen with anyone in the process. So absolutely.
Trustee Gonzalez, one?
First, I want to say I'm really pleased with this board as a deliberative body. Like this discussion right now is such a different discussion. Um, we're really working and trying to figure out stuff together as opposed to winning an argument. And, and I, for me, that's just really critical. Um, I think we've worked really hard as a board over the last couple of years to transform how we interact with each other, what we expect from each other, et cetera. And, and are we perfect? No, I mean, that's just, that's not going to happen, but I think we've come a long way. I think this, this process is useful that way. Um, Dr. Benjamin just talked about confidentiality as a sort of the the benchmark. And so it, again, I, I think anybody who looks at this and says, oh, you're supposed to forget what you saw in that process. That's not what we're saying. We're just saying, don't bring that information to the board as a whole and breach the confidentiality of that process so that you create the space in the search process for people to be able to share what they think, their perspective, without thinking, oh, I'm going to be punished because this is going to get out. And so there needs to be a certain amount of just trust and faith in that. What I like about this change is in part that I've seen what we've been doing for the last eighteen years and the difficulty of getting of the process that we've had, which sometimes works, but kind of often doesn't. And I think was in fact, um, kind of indicated by the, the way the board changed the policy and said, well, we can go back and, and get anybody else we want. Like, wait, really? You can do that? Um, and I, I, we did that. And I think it really was a reflection of an us and them mentality. And I think what we're striving for in the district, or I'll speak for myself, but I think this is true, that what we're striving for as a district is buy-in on everything that we do. Even when you are in a minority position, like, all right, I was heard. My voice didn't prevail in that moment, but I was heard. Okay, we'll try it your way. I, we didn't get, we didn't go my way, but we'll try it your way. We'll see. Now we've had deliberation and now we can look at the outcome and say, did that work? Hmm. All right. I guess I was wrong. Look, it worked or didn't work. We had deliberation. We figured it out. And I think that the process of including trustees in the search is going to create more collective buy-in. That there's a way in which sometimes in this district and probably in many districts, there's this separation between the board, the administration, and then everybody else where there's a lot of distrust. And I think we need to just shift that. I think we need to be thinking of not hierarchy, but role. So our role is to represent the community and ultimately the buck stops here, the buck stops there. So we have a particular role. But it's not a hierarchy of intelligence and certainly not a hierarchy of knowledge. And so I think that's what we're looking for is the board to be able to participate in a search process and really tap into the knowledge and understanding and experience of the people who work in this district to inform and vice versa. So that that search committee really does become a committee of the whole where we all agree. Yeah, these three, these are the ones we think should go forward. And then ultimately, because we are the board, we have to make that decision. So, um, I'm kind of excited about the possibility. Uh, I'm not thrilled by the timeline, but none of the timelines are great. And that's just the way it is. We've got a process where we're going to get feedback on what we're talking about. And if we respect ourselves and say, we need to be deliberative, I think we need to respect that process also and give the time for input. And really then listen to the input from that review of thirty days, which is kind of minimal. Thanks.
Trustee Quinlan?
Um, yes, um, in one of our earlier, uh, discussions around hiring administrators. Um, I, I brought up the idea of training our hiring committees. Because while I may be able to hire a machinist or a machinist instructor, I have no experience and no knowledge about hiring a chancellor. I know what I want. But do the other sixteen people or seventeen or twenty people in that room, do they understand what I want? Um, and so I don't know if this is even possible to bring those seventeen people on the committee, plus the, the trustees together. So we understand what each other wants and there's some training and guidance about the process so that we're most effective. And I guess I would, uh, you know, like to use our current football situation, we have people going for the Super Bowl. They've been training many of them all their lives and certainly since, you know, the summer to get to this point. Nobody's going to walk in tomorrow and start doing what they're doing and be effective at it. And I kind of feel the same way about hiring a chancellor, bringing all these people together. Uh, you know, uh, Dr. Moore may look at it from the standpoint, is this person going to be open to shared governance, to relying on the faculty, um, classified, are they going to support their benefits? Part-time faculty, will this chancellor support, um, you know, a hundred percent medical force? All those people are going to have different agendas. And by coming together, I think we can come out with a unified agenda and maybe make that hire a little bit more effective. That would be really doing something different than we've done in the past.
Uh, Cindy, I don't know. I think we'll probably give the same response to that. For one thing, we have training, we have a, an item on here and we have a February fourteenth that they could change, but we wanted you to see that we put in training for new board members because you're coming in as a, a trustee now, and you've been in district before, but you've not been a trustee. So we're offering training on the hiring process for a chancellor. Uh, and that includes, uh, the EEO part of it as well for the new trustees. When we meet the, the constituency group leaders or the constituency groups choose their representatives based on whatever their criteria. based on whatever their criteria are for choosing reps. We provide training, you see that on the calendar as well. Full training for every, the same training for everybody on the committee. They cannot participate in this process if they don't. The other thing we do, and because you haven't been through it, you, I assume you don't know this, is that you, you, what you have to keep in your head, trustee Quinlan, is that it's the board's hire. You in a meeting soon to come will determine what you consider to be the priorities for this chancellor. What will this person face? What do you want this person to focus on? Those priorities will go out, the ones you develop, will go out college-wide, district-wide, rather, to get feedback from anybody who participates in the survey on what they think about those priorities. They get to add additional priorities, so then that's how everybody comes together to determine what it is the they want in a chancellor. And and then you have the minimum requirements, the degree, working through diversity, all that stuff, that's automatic. Because it comes out of the job description, which we're going to look at in a few minutes. But there's a plan for everything you said. It's not putting everybody together in a room, I don't think that's a good idea. It's your hire, you don't need to be in that room. They're going to get their chance, and not just the committee, it's not just the committee, they're screening, they're elected to go through the process. But everybody gets to have a say in what do we want this chancellor to do, what do we want the chancellor to uh to focus on, and then the public forums come. People get to ask questions, so there's opportunity for input for all the employees throughout the process if they choose to participate. And you'll come up with priorities, that job announcement will have priorities on which every employee of the district has had an opportunity uh to to aid in developing. I don't know if I left.
No, we can go into greater depth of whenever we go over the orientation and show you exactly how those priorities turn into the criteria by which the committee, which is trained to do so, calibrate and and categorize how well the potential candidates meet those criteria, it moves all the way through the process.
That answered a big part of my question.
You bet.
Yeah, yeah, there's lots of opportunity.
Yeah.
Trying to build an inclusive process, and and that's what's difficult about the calendar too. Because it's not inclusive if you have it at a time when people have things happening that people need to be a part of. We have to, we're stressing the inclusionary nature of this entire thing, or it's just no good, all of that has to be done, inclusion has to be there so that people trust the process. We don't want people to have doubt about the process.
Thank you.
So, any other questions, or where are you landing as it pertains then to the board policy twenty-four thirty-one? What is your will? Is it time for our thumbs up sideways down? Can we take a a poll? Are you ready to go forward as it's written, or is there more commentary or questions? We'll call trustee Winthro- Winthro?
Withrow.
Withrow, I will say this correctly, forgive, oh, I see, I couldn't see your thumb. All right, so it looks like we've got green lights that this, the corrections that were made are what we're going forward with, and these will be taken. These will be sent to the participatory governance council, who which is meeting Friday, I think, Friday. Exactly, and the process will begin.
Right, exactly.
Great work, everyone. Yes, sir.
Now, are we going to talk about timeline?
Yes, job description.
Job description.
Job descriptions.
Yeah, sorry, job description then timelines, yes, sir. So we'll pull up the job description, this year exists, this is what exists, we assume that you read over this, and we're looking, the question before you, is this satisfactory? Changes additions?
Trustee Reese, then trustee Quinlan?
The the mine is more grammatical than anything else. When you go to the leadership management characteristics and expectations, uh, the beginning of the prompt, the next chancellor will, and then if you look at all the bullet points, it starts with that put, that demonstrates, so of course, this was an old.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So if we could change that.
All right, good, and the and actually.
That's easy.
My in, the English uh editor in me.
You missed that?
No, 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 I did not write this, I would never have written this, because it is not proper to use a colon before an incomplete clause.
That's right.
And you have to have a complete clause to use a colon, I.
That's right.
Sorry.
Oh, my goodness.
I edit all the time, so we need those, so we we would, we'll take your uh request to fix the the grammar and usage in this policy. Is there any other substantive change? I think trustee.
Yes, so um I'm concerned with uh and and a lot of our documents, uh basically with a lack of recognition that the role this district plays and the economic development and well-being of our community.
Yeah.
We address it in our mission statement.
Good idea.
The vision for Quest addresses it, but it's not addressed in this hiring document or this job description. And I don't have the language, uh, but to me, I would like to see that point represented. Uh, because that's, I just believe to me, the chancellor of this district has the potential to be one of the most consequential people in this East Bay area in terms of, you know, the role they play, not just in providing education for our students, but opportunity for our students and our community to move forward.
That's a good point. Cindy, can you go back to the first page?
Right, we'll go back and the opportunities and responsibilities, it sounds like it would go there if that's the will.
In that section, yeah, we could put up, put something there if you'd like.
It's, it sounds appropriate. Yes, sir.
Did I miss something here, or did we uh focus on having a new chancellor come in on one January?
We haven't talked about the timeline yet, sir.
Okay.
So this is just the job description at this point.
Thank you.
Yes.
Cindy, can we go to the minimum clause? I just don't want to have a problem later, so the board can see what those are.
Yeah, this, this is very pertinent to the hiring process. Thank you.
Good.
So, there's minimum, there's desirables, and then there's the sort of expectations. And just as a technical thing, are we limited in any way? Are we limited in any way in what we say is a minimum qualification? Is that illegal?
Yeah, you're limited by the ed code.
That says you can do this, but you can't do that.
Well, the the ed code says what the minimums are, I think this is right, Dr. McKinley and HR folks. The ed code says what the minimums are for any administrator, and these reflect that.
That's correct.
But then can we add in additional minimum quals?
Yes.
That we say?
Yes.
Okay, so, I don't want to say PhD myself, but that that's me. But I I don't want to say that myself, that's that's just me. I don't believe that's actually an essential quality. Might be desirable, but I don't, that's just me.
It's an eliminating one, it it'll eliminate a lot of people, and I know a lot of people with master's degrees who made excellent chancellors and presidents.
But there is something that I think that I'd like to see emphasized quite a bit more throughout the thing. Whether, and and frankly, I would make it a minimum qualification. And it would be something like this, demonstrated capacity to build teams, demonstrated capacity to, um. Now, if we go to like the Laney College shared governance handbook, and you look at the spirit in that language, gosh, it's really aspirational in this really uplifting way. And I want to see a chancellor who comes in, who not only respects it, but embraces it, nurtures it, cultivates it. Because I think that the 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 main weakness in this district has been the way in which we shoot ourselves in the foot around our relationships. I think a minimum qualification for this district is the skill to navigate complex relationships and weave together morale and team building and and inclusion and decision-making and buy-in and decision-making. We've got one thing in here that's almost pro forma, respect for shared governance. And frankly, for me, if we have somebody who's really good at team building, they'll bring on a team and they'll fill the gaps with the expertise that they need, but they need to know how to do that. And um, so I don't have the exact language, so, but for me, that would be a minimum qual or the very, very least, a high desirable qualification. The other thing that I'm wondering about is, we're doing a draft, I'm presuming of a job description. This is going to go out, we're going to have feedback input, et cetera, or this is the job description?
This is it.
Okay.
You have the authority, this is your authority.
So, this is where I think now it's a little bit problematic. We've got this elaborate, this elaborate process for uh uh kind of community input, um, inclusion in 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 the screening and the search, et cetera, and if if in fact, we're saying we've got a little bit of time here, because probably a July one start date, just as a non-starter, given our calendar. I think we actually have time to get a little bit more feedback, and I, as a decision maker, I'm not ready to say, oh, yeah, this. Because I think that just as we're saying, we want to put out board policy. Frankly, I think we need this community to reflect a little bit on what should that job description be? Um, I don't feel qualified to make that decision on my own without input from these presidents. From, you know, the senior staff and from the shared governance constituents, and especially the students right now, so that that's me, and so I'm not ready to make a decision like, oh, yeah, and I don't see a necessity to make a decision tonight on a job description.
It might be helpful for uh Dr. McKinley to to comment on this, especially as it pertains to minimum qualifications and how they're enacted through the HR process, because you don't want to put something in minimum qualifications that an HR clerical, I mean, a
Okay, thank you.
Couldn't screen by the given materials, so you may be speaking about hiring criteria. And some of the the priorities we're talking about building collectively that go into the overarching search process. I'm not saying you couldn't take a
I hear what you're saying, so that 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 you want somebody screened out because they don't get minimums, but demonstrated capacity, that's a subjective thing. I think maybe that's where that's a desirable. Uh.
It may be an absolutely
A really high.
Number one hiring criteria.
Yeah, and but I'm not ready to wordsmith that from the podium right now, and, yeah.
Trustee Reese?
To piggyback on what you just said, I I'm not sure if we'd be doing the wordsmith thing, because we would give that to you all though, right? I mean, in terms of the content, the other part of it is, I think we need to be conscientious of the timeline, so we have three different timelines. And if we didn't actually look at this job description and we didn't make any changes, it would have just gone through the process as is, as flawed as it is. So I'm not sure if we can afford the time to do it, and if we can, good. Um, I don't know how I feel about that, that I mean, I don't, I'm not sure, I'm not exactly sure how I feel about what you want to do with the the job description.
Well, let's go to the timeline description as a discussion to see whether we've got the bandwidth to do that.
Yeah, and let us know, and I'm sure you would, Cindy and Helen, just let us know, be frank with us in terms of what's real and practical and what we would like in a utopian world, and if the two do not match, and there's two big of a delta, let us know, you know.
Well, perhaps we'll move to the timeline and come back to this discussion.
That's what I was thinking.
That's a great idea.
But I thi- I think it would be valuable to understand that the, you know, the job description lives on past the hire. So I do think it's important, you, if this was revised in August of twenty nineteen, that's what we were looking at. This this language was approved at that point, so it it's possible that throughout our timeline, that there is an opportunity to refresh it to maybe mirror the values and and some of the principles that you're describing. Okay. Timelines. There are three. They look on face value, they look similar, they're deeply complex, as we were preparing uh to share these with you, and in light of everything else you have going on, we prepared a document that's on the screen right now that you have not seen, because we did this today. Trying to figure out how to help you make sense of this and come to decisions. So you, I'll share this with you, and you could tell me if it's helpful, and if it's not the way you want to do it, we can step back and just go through them one by one. But this offers.
Could this be pasted into our board docs so we could individually, because I can't see that.
Oh.
I don't care.
I'm not sure the, is that something that we can do?
Cindy, if you, if you can forward it to Sasha.
I did, or she's got it.
Oh, she's got it, then we can send it out to your email. And then you can.
I think they're wanting to see it right now.
I can update, give me just one minute, I'll PDF it and update it for docs, one minute.
I knew she could.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and while she's doing that, I'll just give you the, what, this is just pulling the the big nuggets out of those three timelines, so that you can cross map what happens when with those, that may help, and but we're, like I say, we're perfectly happy to go one by one through them all. But I, even I was going, I could get lost in these things, because they're they're showing, there's so many steps. There's, you know, such a a depth of important things to be done. Yes.
Can we just jump in on this discussion about timeline then?
Oh, without a C, is that what you're saying?
Well, we can start.
I I would recommend that we at least go over the three, so that everyone has the same body of contextual knowledge and then jump in if it's okay.
I'm sure I'll get here soon.
Whatever works, yeah.
Thank you.
Do we need?
So let me know when you're ready.
You ready?
Take just a moment for this to come.
I think we're waiting for it.
Sasha, could you let us know when you've gotten this in board docs, please?
Yes, ma'am, I'm about to upload it right now, I had a PDF, give me just one second.
Thank you.
No problem.
Yes. Trustee Withrow?
Shouldn't we start and and looking at these timelines, there are a lot of things you want to look at, and any kind of a process like this, but um how long we want to have the incoming chancellor on board, along with the chancellor that we have under contract through the end of December?
That certainly will play into.
Having been in a number of management positions and whatever, uh, I would not have felt comfortable either coming in and spending a month with my predecessor standing there. It wouldn't have been the same token.
Okay.
What somebody coming in behind me for a month. The lone two or three months.
And I think it will be helpful, trustee Withrow, to give, make sure everyone has the same context, and then we can go to those kinds of considerations. Would that be all right? You can see it now?
Have it on board docs, we're good.
Okay, you got it. All right, so the chart shows you three, the three options with the start dates you see in in order temporally. So the the second column, the September twenty twenty-three is for a timeline that would have a hire ready to begin September one. The next column, a hire ready to begin November one, and then one that is a hire ready to begin January one. And if you look across, in the synopsis at the top, I think is important to consider, because the the September hire is what we're, we've called um informally, the accelerated hire. That is one where the process is starting now, and it runs straight through, no breaks through the summer, it continues, and you'll see that the the bulk of the actual work occurs in the summer. November, the November hire date has all the search preparation is completed this spring. The application process, the applications are open in the summer. And then the, all of the screening, interviews, forums, the decision-making occurs in the fall. With the January, it's a slight variation between the, between those two. There's, the only thing that's happening in the spring according to this this January timeline is pre-search activities, and I'll go over what that means in a moment, with a pause through the summer. And then all of the search preparation and screening and hiring processes occur in the fall, so that's your big picture view. So going back to the September hire, in fact, you'll see across the board, in all three categories, your pre-search activities, which is some of what you're doing right now. Getting that search policy down, your job description, getting clear on your process, getting clear on your structure and your timeline. It's the same for all three. It's the same for all three, and we're saying it's going to take till February twenty eighth to wrap that up. In the then you start to see variations with the search preparation. That's where the board gives, we have the discussion with you in a board meeting where you give us the priorities, which then go out for the survey process. It's where you actually select the committee members. The pre-search activities say what's the composition of the screening committee, but in this next phase, you pick them. You get the idea, the representatives from each of the constituents, but you select the community members, the representatives, you select which board members would participate. You we do, we conduct the survey. You'll see that there's a variance in the amount of time, slight variance in the amount of time that's given to the public. For your community to give feedback based on, you know, the accelerated one is only one week and the other two we're giving. Two weeks for people to give feedback on the survey, survey for your district community to give feedback. The hiring criteria goes through multiple steps, the position profile and announcement is all prepared. And you see that's done. Between February fourteenth and April twenty-fifth in the first two, the same thing in those first two timelines. Because it's a pretty structured process. It's got to take a certain amount of time. For the January timeline, that's extended where only the board priorities are identified. At the July twenty-fifth, there is a hiatus through the summer and activities are not picked back up again until after the fall term begins. The position posting varies with the three. So you'll see. A posting for the accelerated September timeline where it's posted from April twenty-eighth through June second. It's a five-week posting. For the, you know, what we think is the more comprehensive timeline, the November twenty twenty-three is a six-week posting happening over the summer. Purposely so that applications could come in, but you're not going to lose and you would not lose engagement from your college and district community. So you're not going to have committee member meetings happening. Then you're not going to have interviews. You won't have public forums happening in the summer when you're in some of your critical employee groups are not around. That position posting would not occur until September. In the extended timeline that's going through January, because you're not doing the preparatory work until the fall term. Screening activities for the accelerated timeline are happening at the beginning of. They and then the screening committee meetings, the selection and the first round interviews, all the interviews done by the committee. Screening committee happen in the month of June for the accelerated timeline. For the November hire, the more comprehensive timeline. You've got paper screening. So the committee, the screening committee would be asked to do paper screening. In August, but they're being they're given from the first of August to the twentieth to do it at their leisure. They don't have to come to any meetings. So that helps accelerate the process a little bit, but not it, you know, people may be taking vacation was the consideration here. So maybe they're gone two of those weeks, but they have the other time to do it. Then the committee meeting, the screening committee would not come together again until the second week of fall classes, so that it's not interfering with summer activities. It's not interfering with the first week of fall classes. The the November, the more extended comprehensive timeline. Get also gives you the opportunity to have two different, as we've suggested in here, two different kinds of screening committee interviews. You would have a first level interview that's by Zoom where you could actually screen a larger number of of potential candidates. And then narrow that down to a a more concentrated group that you would have in-person. Interviews with the screening committee before making recommendations of finalists to the board. That's the only the only one of the timelines in which we could build that second level Zoom in is with this more extended. So you won't see that in the other two. In the January hire, it's interesting because by, even though it's a January uh twenty-four hire date. It's actually a compressed calendar for having to do everything. Within that spring term. Now that could be modified, you know, depending on your interest, but it does put those enter the in all that application and screening process happening in the month of November. Public forums, I think, are critical for you to look at in the three timelines. Because in the accelerated one, you're going to see your public forums in July tenth through twelfth. Your public forums in the November hire, the more comprehensive timeline would be October fourth through sixth. And in the January, because the way this one is constructed is we're understanding your interest was. You know, putting a pause on everything, it's going to accelerate it so that those forums don't happen until that first week of December. The board meeting where just the the and and that's the public forums and the board interviews because those generally are within the same timeframe. So then the contract approval. Could happen uh in the accelerated one at the July twenty-fifth. That's your, you know, if it if something goes wrong. And you don't make that date. You guys are dark until uh you're not coming back until August twenty-first. So it puts a lot of pressure on that timeline as well to make sure you get to the contract because you can't, you have to approve a contract like that in a um regular board meeting. You have in the no in the November start date and it. It's uh you have October the tenth, or it, you know, if you need a little bit of time, we noticed as we were building this, it's pretty tight against the time for the board, the public forums and the board interviews being for the fourth through the sixth. It's possible that you would come to a negotiation on a contract within those that between the sixth and the tenth. But you might, you know, we see sometimes it takes a little more time. Sometimes your final candidates want to confer with their. Attorneys or it takes a little more time going back and forth. You could go to the October twenty-fourth board meeting to make that contract approval. And then you're looking at um pushed up against the December twelfth board meeting. That's your last meeting of the fall with the January start date. And I would finally point out that in these. We put these arbitrary start dates, you know, it's up to you and the candidates. That's the start date in is negotiated. Will you put your expected start dates in the position announcements, but oftentimes it depends on what's going on, you know. What's what are the particular circumstances with the can a candidate or with, you know. If it's an internal candidate, they're they're here. If they're out of state, they've got to give notice and move, you know, they lots of things going on in people's lives. But it could be anytime, frankly, it could be anytime after the board meeting when the contract is approved. But you were generally, you would generally expect somebody at this level to need at least a month. And and that's a minimal time to be able to, they would be in a some kind of a of an important position, I would assume and want to give. Sufficient and proper notice where they are, have time to relocate and start a new life with you. So that's the big overview. Up for questions, comments?
Uh, trustee Quinlan and then.
Thank you for this last piece that glued everything together pretty well.
Oh, I'm so glad. It was hard to figure out how to convey this without taking all night long.
So I have uh two questions. Uh, the first thing I don't see here is on the formation of the screening committee when that's actually put together, but.
That happens i- in terms of who is on the committee?
Yes.
That's in the block under search preparation. You see that second bullet committee members. That's what that means.
So the second question is based on on your experience and knowledge.
Mm hmm.
Uh, does the November. Schedule open us up to more candidates than the December schedule would, the fact that it's announced earlier?
Yes.
I don't know about that, Cindy.
The position.
It's the middle of a semester. I guess my we'll be ahead of everybody else, though. That's the point.
That's what I was thinking.
We have done it. Yeah, we we walked through this because there are going to be other colleges hiring for January one. So if we go with the November first, we've probably finished before anybody else who's.
Yeah, we're ahead of the the January.
Of the, right.
That's what I was thinking.
Mm hmm.
Thanks for putting together the calendar. Um. I've got a few just sort of considerations to throw into the mix. One is if we really want. Full participation and buy-in. I think we need to look and figure out when are people here? I think if we're asking for full participation and buy-in, and then we've got all this work going on over the summer as a principal thing, especially July. I think we're in trouble. So that's one thing. Two, then I think it really, the the question that that trustee Quinlan just asked about pool, I think is critical. So, you know, like right now, you've got these searches going on and you might notice like San Mateo just made some offers. They slipped.
Yep.
Right.
But they were first out of the gate and they had their pick of candidates. Now, what they did with those candidates is a different matter altogether. Not our affair, but they did have their pick of candidates because they were out first. And so I think being out early in the fall and being able to. Kind of make an offer earlier is good. But I think that the calendar that you've got here is a little compressed, and I'm wondering whether. If we said we wanted a January one start date, but we were going to make an offer closer to this November. You know, the November calendar.
Mm hmm.
Could we do a lot of that prep work that normally would have been done in the November? And then take a do an eight-week search in July and August. But have everything ready to go, have the position ready to announce July one, do us do the eight weeks and then come back. And then resume, do our paper screen, et cetera, so that we're not squeezing into a four and a half week search. Position posting and then squeezing in, you know, interviews, et cetera. It seems to me that if we did a lot of the work right now and then we're ready to go right at the beginning of the summer. We'd have eight weeks, which is an ample time, and a lot of people are figuring out their life changes, et cetera. We kind of get the best of both worlds if we could accelerate the top mildly, but it would be leisurely enough. And then extend the fall a bit by starting September one with applications already in hand.
May may I ask a clarifying question? Um, it sounds like you're working off of the January twenty twenty-four timeline as you're making your comments. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I would call to your attention that the second, the no, the one that's named November twenty twenty-three is a January twenty twenty-four timeline. And I think your best one.
Well, the the challenge in November twenty twenty-three, in my mind.
Uh huh.
The challenge is that we start picking up the application screening. August one, and it doesn't seem to me that that's necessary. People come back to work here mid-August. And so we could, instead of starting that screening August one, we could start that screening September one. And really give people the time off.
That's true. We could modify that somewhere between the two, but I wouldn't recommend pushing it as far as the third option.
Yeah, so no, thank you for pointing that out. I like the November twenty twenty-three. But we wouldn't need to make a start date of number November.
No, you wouldn't.
Could be date January one.
Correct.
We'd have a little bit more time to play around with it. Uh, plus a longer search period.
Correct.
Posting.
And we almost did that on that one, but when we just then we decided to show you a third one.
See, because, yeah, we thought that you wanted something that was more specific. May I also. Argue to you that. The advantage of completing, you know, building a a timeline like this middle way, this November, that's called November twenty twenty-three. It gives you the opportunity, should you run into any challenges along the way. Should you, we've seen it, we've had it where us the pool was considered to be inadequate and had to reopen. You know, we've we've just heard, we, you know, looked at other searches that got. To the end or somewhere along the way and needed to make an adjustment. This would give you time for an adjustment. If, so I don't know that I.
Yeah.
I mean, it's yours. If you want us to change it to do the paper screenings starting after, it would actually need to be after uh Labor Day. You know, if you wanted to push it back that far, we could do that. We can make it like that and show you, but you might want to consider. A pathway that's, I mean, we could, let's look at that together. You might want to consider a pathway that still gives you some flexibility and doesn't push you too close to the December.
I I see.
Twelfth date. You don't want to get up against your.
Yeah, no. So I like the November twenty twenty-three. I would just stretch it a teeny bit more in the summer. So that we weren't asking people to come back and start working before.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can certainly do that if that's your will. We're also looking, you lose two weeks. In August, so it's it's kind of clunky.
Yeah, it would push it probably to a November fifteen.
Yeah, it probably would. We, but then you also have to see where it hits with Thanksgiving. So certainly, certainly we can.
Yeah.
These it, this is like the madcap Rubik's Cube, you know, this thing.
So I I have a question that to help us here. Are you willing to eliminate? Number one, September twenty twenty-three, because it is the least exclusionary, for lack of a better term.
I think the consensus up here is yes.
Okay, so we we know we won't do twenty-three. September twenty twenty-three. So it's between the other two with maybe modification, but you need to choose one for us.
And and I think we want to return to trustee with rose concern that he raised earlier at a certain point as well.
Go ahead, Bill.
In looking at the um in your chart here. It would seem to me that you would have a selection date. And then a physical start date. And and if you had that kind of a concept in the November, the middle track. Would give you the flexibility in case the whole thing comes apart.
Mm hmm.
Could be money.
Just, yeah, we've seen it. We've seen it happen where the top candidate um decided this was a nice bargaining chip for their home district.
Right. So that if you had a a uh selection date. Contract date.
Mm hmm.
And have a start date of one January.
Yes, sir. That's the intention. That's the intention.
Yeah.
And the added value of that, it does give you some of the transitional time with, you know, it however much it is with the with your interim chancellor.
How often do you in going through the process of hiring a new chancellor, do you have a? A candidate comes in and he's been tagged by three different districts?
Well, it can happen. I I can't give you a number.
It happens.
Yeah, it does happen more often than you think because Pete, right now, there are, I was, I've been trying to get the full list, but there are at least, I think, maybe seven or eight searches going on. And people are getting in more than one.
Mm hmm.
And it's a beat the clock kind of situation for the college or the district. Because they can be finalists, of course, in more than one.
So it looks like we're coming to a consensus around number two, if I'm understanding my colleagues right. Is that true? Okay, go ahead, Nikki.
I like number two, but a modified number two, so that we push in. And to the middle of August for screening or end of August for for paper screening. I I would take the whole month off myself, in part because August is the only month we get off.
I see.
And um, I don't know, those of you who are newer, maybe that's not a big deal, but I've been at this a long time and I'm really jealously guard August.
I see.
The one month I get off.
Mm hmm.
Retiring.
If would it be acceptable to like, I mean, we'll have to see how the ripple effects, but if the paper screening were to start, say, when when the flex day starts the seventeenth?
I think that makes good sense because then you've got all the employees in there.
That's what I.
Go mid-August.
I was looking at, we could look and see how that would work. I mean, it might be like hard for. People to do their flex and their first week of classes and do their paper screening all at the same time was the concern.
And we were thinking, yeah, that the paper screening is electronic for board members, so wherever they were. Or are at the time. They could do it. And we know it's an off month, but we didn't, that was a, that was a challenge there.
We're trying not to impose on the the very critical work that happens at the beginning of the term. So that first week of class and flex days, we were trying to. Hold sacred and not impose upon, but it's up to you.
Trusty base and trustee honest.
And but it seems to me that that might be, you'll have a higher probability of people doing it than if we tried to do it.
Earlier.
Before actually being officially working, right?
Fine. Fine.
Um, and the other question I have is clearly there's a value add to in-person interviews. We all know that, right? And you have two slots for that in the September and the January twenty twenty-four. Is there a way, is there a reason why you opted to do Zoom and in-person interviews for option two and?
Yes.
Um, and then could we move that to in-person only? But, but first.
Yeah, yeah. The, the thought was if you have the time, we recommend it. Because of the added value. It's going to give you a perspective that you don't get in in-person. We would never recommend that you don't do the in-person. But in a, in a world where so much of our work is, and many of our engagements with students, with employees, with the public, with, you know, a big portion of our job now, had, is, this is a new skill that we must have, is the remote leadership. And so in a way, you would get a, a view of candidates through that lens, of how they show up, how they engage in that environment. It's a different environment, but you know, it's, it's, could be cut out, certainly.
Uh, so, I guess, but for the September and for the twenty twenty-four, we did only in-person interviews, as you originally slotted.
Right.
So, um.
Do, we just, well, because we didn't see any way to get them in, but it's, it's not essential. I mean, maybe Dr. Benjamin has a perspective. It just feels like it gives you a more rich set of, you know, a different way to.
Yeah.
Make a very tough decision.
To whom do you want to take us, with, which candidates do you want to take a, a, a second look at? The first one is kind of like speed dating. To get an impression. And then, and it would be maybe thirty or forty minutes.
Gotcha.
And then from that trial run, you say, okay, well, we're going to choose, and then you could maybe see ten or fifteen people. You're probably not going to interview that many, but from that, you could narrow down. Now, these are the ones we really want to see now in person. That, that's what we were thinking.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
And I, we know you haven't done that before, but it's just an option. You don't have to do it.
Have you tried that process before?
We're trying it now somewhere.
I see, so.
Yeah, we're in, we're doing it right now, but we, all during the pandemic, that's all we had.
All right.
And we saw what that was like, it pros and cons.
So it would be up to the search committee to do, to decide, who do we want to see on Zoom as a preview? And now who do we want to invite for an in-person?
Yeah, it's like, you think of it like a funnel. You've got all the applicants, you do your paper screening, you get it down to those that you would do with your Zoom interviews, and then you winnow that down to the group you would do with your in-person, and then you're down to your three to five finalists that you would send to the board. Or they, whoever the committee is.
Just the honest?
Yes. So, um, I, I understand what my colleagues are saying regarding the August one to twenty, because it's break time. But I do understand what you're saying. I actually agree with you regarding it being at your leisure and online and sort of, yeah. Uh, however you please to do it. Um, but I do have a question. If, well, a couple of questions. Number one, just so it doesn't seem as though you're taking time, can you put it from August tenth to the, through the twentieth? And give them ten days so it doesn't feel as though you're stealing time from, uh, from individuals? And then number two. Options one and three don't have paper screening. So how necessary is it and what? What does it add regarding if, if we even use it or not?
Certainly, and that, and I'll take responsibility for that lack of clarity. They all have paper screening. I pulled it out in this document just to show that, see, all the other things, we just lumped it all within a broader set of dates. Paper screening is part of the application screening process. There's an HR piece that's a minimum qualification screening, and then application screening means the HR component as well as the committee's work in paper screening. I apologize. It's something we go over with the orientation, so they all have it.
The only, sorry, the only thing I'm unsure about is that this is a much larger timeframe for the second option then, right?
Correct.
One and three have about a month and these two.
Correct, because we lose two weeks in the middle because of the flex days and the first week of class, and then Labor Day jumps in there. So you lose a lot in that time. So it's extended, so it's not jumping on top of the first, you know, starting up the fall term. And we've just, the reason that such a long frame, timeframe for the August, for the paper screening, because it doesn't, you're not working all those days. However long you need to do your paper screening, you can do it anytime. So, say perhaps you're on vacation between, you know, the first and the fifteenth. Well, you can get it done from the fifteenth to the twentieth.
And you can stop and go back, right?
You can do it anytime you want during that timeframe. It just has to be, you can't start before the first, because we don't have the data. You don't have the candidates. You have to end by the twentieth, or we can't compose these to be ready for the screening committee meeting on the August twenty-eighth.
Right, so in, in your opinion, if we, can we change that to August tenth or the twentieth, just to make it seem as though we're not?
I think you'd actually be hurting people if you did that. You would remove their opportunity to work between the first and the tenth. What if they, what if they're on vacation between the tenth and the twentieth?
Well, I'm, I'm just, uh, questioning this because my colleagues are saying.
Sure.
But I, I'm fine with this.
Yeah, but I meant, I think it would, it could actually hurt people.
Yeah, but I think trustee Gonzalez Yan was suggesting that we start at maybe mid-August.
And not do anything else until after Labor Day. He wants to bump the whole thing down.
Yeah.
The, the. Cause the academic calendar. And start it when we actually have people back.
Yeah, we can do that.
On, on flex days or thereafter. And so then we're not asking them to work for free.
Yeah, we can, we can run a scenario for you that does that.
That'd be great.
So can we see if there are anyone, any objections to November twenty twenty-three with those changes that are recommended?
I have no objections. Anyone else?
I, I would still like to see what the final, um, start date would be.
No, we're going to bring it back next month.
Oh, no, it'll come back to you.
It, it's coming back.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We need to go back to the job description. We need to go back to the job description for a minute. Thank you, uh, trustees, very much for your engagement on this.
We have our marching orders.
So on that question of job descriptions, president. We're going to revisit the job description itself. I had suggested that we would benefit from some community input on that job description. But I'm not quite sure how to get that. It's not kind of built into the process that we've got laid out here. That I've been on hiring committees sometimes where the committee shapes the job description and then puts it out.
That's exactly what I was thinking, trustee, and you might want to utilize your screening committee. You know, we could go back and take some of the recommendations that we heard from you and modify some of the language and bring it, but then when that screw, that screening committee meets prior to your finalizing the position profile. Because they're giving input that you will be considering before you make your final decisions, you could ask them to also give input on the job description.
So then we don't actually have to have a final vote on the job description until right before we're about to put up a position.
Yeah, we could build that in.
It's our understanding from Dr. McKinley.
Happier about that.
It's our understanding from Dr. McKinley that in, in your district, you do not approve the job description. It, the job descriptions don't come to the board. So whatever changes get made, when it comes back to you, that's going to be it after, you know, after the committee or whoever gets to look at it.
Well, but they would be, you would be making the decisions on this job description since this is your.
Absolutely, but not a vote. It's my understanding, without a vote.
Again, sorry.
That no vote is required on changes in a job description. That's our understanding. It will come back to you for the final review and that would be it. Am I remembering that correctly, Dr. McKinley?
That's correct.
And just a point of clarification, once the search committee modifies, if they do the position profile, it is, to your earlier point, it doesn't go back to the district. It is.
It comes to you for final.
Comes to us.
Yeah, for to make the final decisions on all of those, yeah. But it could be, the job description could be something that you ask the screening committee to give input to you for your final decisions. Does that help?
I'm just a little bit confused by what Dr. Benjamin said about, um, what HR is telling us. So I'm looking at the, the board policy and there's a lot of words there right now and my brain isn't quite firing. But it seems to me that on this position, the job description should be approved by the board. This is. Is that?
That's correct. It's approved by the board, yes.
Oh, okay, so I was confused by what. Okay.
She was talking about the job descriptions for the other employees in the district.
Okay, all good. But on this one, we're going to, we're going to have final say.
This is yours. It's your employee.
Okay, thank you. Just clarifying.
We have some time.
Thank you. All good.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So to make sure we understand, we will make these minor changes and then it goes to the screening committee for input.
For the job description.
On the job description, that was a final decision, right, Cindy? And then back to the board.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Then you'll have another opportunity. It won't slow you down.
Right, and then we'll, we'll bring the timeline to you again for our final review and approval at your next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Good night.
We appreciate it.
Okay, anytime.
Okay, let's move on to informational items. Six point one, sunshining labor contracts. Dr. McKinley?
Yes, thank you, uh, uh, thank you, hello everyone. This is, uh, uh, SEIU sunshining the, uh, the entire hourly employee contract. This is a separate contract from their regular contract. We had already sunshine our, our, our interest in that earlier, and this is them for the first reading. And so it's an information item, then we'll bring it to the board in the next meeting, uh, as a public hearing, so the public have a chance to uh, voice this opinion with regard to this.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Let's go ahead and move to the consent calendar. Seven point one, approval of all consent items.
Move approval of all consent items.
Second. Thank you, roll call.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. We'll move down to the action items. Twelve point one. Consider adoption of District Brown Act covered legislative bodies to continue conducting meetings via teleconference per, et cetera. Um, I think we have Natasha with us to speak on that, if there's any discussion. Or questions?
Second.
Can I have her motion? Sorry. Is there a motion to approve twelve point one?
Move approval.
Thank you. Second. I think it's trustee Whitrow.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call? I'm sorry, discussion, then roll call. Okay, seeing no discussion, let's go ahead and move.
Student trustee Hogan?
I apologize, I apologize. Just you guys always win. You have something to.
Just one thing I'd like to note again, so the legislature and the governor have figured out that this process works in a, in a COVID environment. And what we've learned is that while it's useful to have in person, it's also really useful to have online access to this meeting. It makes it much more accessible to the public. And I think we should be working in Sacramento to modify the Brown Act to allow uh, distant participation. So, you know, I, that's an operational matter eventually, but I, I think at some point we might want to, unless the administration wants to move unilaterally to get our lobbyists on board and moving in that direction, this would be useful for a, a board discussion to see whether in fact we have consensus that, that in fact there've been a lot of democratic advantages to this online process. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, let's go ahead and move to roll call.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Twelve point two, consider approval authorizing the renewal of a local agreement, California State Preschool Program for contract. And to renew the contract for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year with the California Department of Education to provide funding for childcare and development services at Laney and Merritt Child, Children Centers. Doctor Drucker, um, you're here to speak on that. Um, can I get a motion for twelve point two? Thank you, trustee Whitrow, second. Thank you, trustee Reese, discussion. Any questions, colleagues? Okay. Seeing none, let's go ahead and move to roll call.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. On to twelve point three, return to normal pre-COVID operations. Can I entertain a motion? Thank you, trustee Reese, second. Trustee Whitrow? Thank you, discussion. Any discussion, colleagues? Okay, seeing none, let's move to roll call.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
He said yes.
Oh, thank you. Trustee Napoleon Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Twelve point four, consider modification of the People's Soft Business Help Us Contract for Support Services. Can I have a motion, please? Thank you, trustee Whitrow, second.
Second.
Second, thank you, trustee Reese, discussion. Trustee Johannes?
Um, just a question regarding the second portion in the chart. Um, this is the annual support contract license renewal. I'm, I'm new here, so I'm unsure if it's due to structure of the budget, but usually when I see support, um, contracts is for more than, um, one year. You don't annually, um, increase it just to lock in a rate and sort of the support, uh, system or how, what have you moving forward. Just wondering why it's just annual.
Doctor Drucker?
Yeah. Usually it's multi-years, what I'm saying.
Yes, so we do year-to-year contracts at Peralta. We do not do multi-year contracts at Peralta.
Okay, so, and regarding the annual, is there an annual increase? For example, what was it last year?
You know, I'm sorry, I don't know, um.
I can.
Antoine's with us.
Yes, yeah, okay. Um, this, this, uh, contract is to support our project that we are engaging in, into the last three years. We are using this contract to, uh, do a process improvement by reviewing our business processes and just aligning it with all our systems that we have, uh, district-wise. So, um, this is a, we, we doing this annual contract as needed. At one point, we're going to stop this contract and keep on going and, uh, after we improve all our system, for example, uh, one of the biggest, uh, projects we have right now going on is the student journey that we are, uh, doing an assessment to improve that. And, uh, when you set up, after we did the upgrade, when you set up this upgrade, every year, all the time, you need to do a process improvement and review all your processes and do the corrections that needs to be done and align them, align the system with it. So that's, this contract support that.
I see. So you're saying at some point you will not need to add, uh, some, and add support at some point?
Is there? Some point.
Yeah, okay, well, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Yes, no problem.
Thank you, Antoine. Do we have any other questions? Okay, seeing no more hands, let's go ahead and move to roll call.
Student trustee Hogan?
No.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
I'm staying.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Moving to. Okay, thank you. Moving to twelve point five, consider approval and of the timeline and process. For an appointment of trustee for area two. Royal?
Move approval.
I'm sorry, yes, of course. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Now we have discussion. Go ahead.
So I'm looking at the timeline and the timeline works, but what I'm not seeing is the actual description that's gonna get posted. So we're supposed to be posting, but we're also supposed to be approving the post. But I, I'm not seeing that.
And what I'll comment on is basically, we had a meeting on January eighteenth and discussed, um, kind of the. Preliminary, what we would like to see in the application. Um, what we did is receive the citation. Um, which would you see that the California Ed Code, um, and it's pretty prescript, prescriptive and it, it sets out. What, what the criteria is, um, and pretty, pretty clear. With the person regardless of sex, eighteen years older, citizens of the state. Resident of the co, uh, community college, a registered voter. And who is not disqualified by the constitutional laws of the state of holding offices. And is eligible to be appointed a member of the governing board. And it says without further qualifications. Um, so the, the other portions of that is going to be outlining the district that it covers. And the, and then if we want to put inside of the, um. The posting, basically those convictions that would disqualify someone. But other than that, we can't expand the requirements. As to who's able to apply for the position. Um, that would come during the, um, interview process.
I'm actually, uh, so I'm, I'm, I'm questioning this now. Because we wouldn't know who we want to interview until we've seen an application. And we can set up minimum qualifications based on a law, and then it's up to this board to make a determination who we appoint, but we need. Some information, knowledge, criteria. In order to make that determination. Otherwise, what we would be saying is, put your name forward and say that you're not a criminal. And that's not gonna work for this board. We're gonna need. An actual application with questions where we say. State your qualifications, what is your philosophy, what is your experience? And I thought that's what we did in the committee. That we laid out a variety of criteria. Then we were saying, okay, well, what would be disqualifying? Well, the things would be disqualifying would be if you didn't meet these minimum qualifications. You lived in a district, et cetera, et cetera. But then on top of that. As a committee, we put forward a variety of criteria that we said, hmm, we think the board is probably interested in these things. And so when we go to do a posting. Of the announcement, we're gonna need to be able to. Post something other than send us your name and tell us you. You're interested. Yes?
Trustee Reese? So I'm looking at our.
Your, your microphone.
I'm looking at San Mateo Community College District, and I think they have also a board vacancy. And exactly as you said. Um, the only thing, they list out the eligibility requirements and for the application. There are basic questions. Are you a resident of, of the area? Uh, are you able to attend a special board meeting? And then there's a candidate statement, and that's it. So that's, that's all you're saying, right? And so we look at that and that's what we do, but. In terms of qualifications or what we want, it would be like somebody who was running for a position. There are no qualifications.
And, and the questions can be developed. After the posting. So the, the things that you're talking about. Um, trustee Ewing is, you know, what are your values? You know, after reading our board goals, what? Do you feel is important? I mean, those things are, are addressed at the, at the actual interview process. Um, we did go back and look. At the process that is currently being. Used at San Mateo. I went back and looked at my prior process. And all we asked was a candidate statement. Why do you want to be a member of the Board of Trustees? And it's the open statement. They say whatever they want to say. We screen based upon that. And then we have our specific questions. That you address when the unique selection of what candidates you're going to interview.
I'm not confident that we are prohibited from asking those questions. And as a committee, we met, we talked about it, we laid out criteria. Staff didn't then come back to us and say, oh, whoops, no, that's not gonna work. So what I'm hearing is. At San Mateo, they've got an open-ended candidate statement. But I imagine that they could have. Been more specific than candidate statement. And in fact, maybe the, I mean, the. What this process does, that. That staff has laid out doesn't even lay out that we're gonna have a candidate statement. It just says. We've got these minimum qualifications. It doesn't even say we're gonna ask for a resume. So I'm, I'm disappointed. That we met, we spent a lot of time talking about it, and now we are at the very last minute. Without the ability to, as a body. Consider what the group had come forward with. For the group to consider. So, uh, you know, it wasn't that that little working committee was going to dictate it, that that working committee. Gave direction to staff to then come back with. Here are the things we'd like to know. We'd like to have you address these things that are unique to our interests in our district.
Yeah, I do have the notes from, from the, uh, committee meeting on, on January eighteenth. What, what I'm saying is, what, what was put forth, it would. Well, if it would be used to limit the qualifications of someone moving forward. It would go against what the Ed Code says, which is without further qualifications. So what, what, what that would be used for is the question, but it seems like the intent would be used. To use as qualifications for moving forward in the process. And that's, that's the part. But we didn't have the citation when we, when we did meet.
Okay, I just think that's an overly literal interpretation of that. Of that. Uh, we're not saying you're disqualified. We're just saying we don't like you, or we like you, and we need some criteria. And without giving direction to say, well, we'd like you to address these things. About our district, if you want to join us as a colleague. It is within our power to make that decision. So we need some criteria. And in order to know what that criteria was, we were supposed to have a discussion now to say. Here's this, we'd like a thousand-word statement of qualifications, or we'd like three hundred words on this and three hundred words on that. Or whatever. I think that is within our power. But I'd like to hear what my colleagues think. If this is an adequate process, I will defer and desist. Um. What, what does the body want?
Go ahead. To give people time to think about that, I, I would say again. That the board has the opportunity to ask. Any qualifying questions, once the candidates have met the minimum qualifications. It does not preclude anything that was discussed at the meeting being put forward. In the form of questions to those candidates that we interviewed.
Trustee Reese?
I think, um, a, a couple of things. If, if, I don't know if Natasha's on here, but I, I think it might be good. Because. What you're saying is that it's a literal interpretation, but. We don't know that for sure. Um, because you're saying that if it's a literal interpretation, we could actually go beyond that, and maybe it isn't supposed to be literal. So. So my point being that unless we know that that is all that can be posted, I don't necessarily want us to change that, and I'm not sure. Yeah, however, that you were not, uh, and I understand this, you guys spent the time with a particular intent. So I think. How we could still utilize that information. Is to bring it into the discussion, into the interviews. But I, but I hear you. You all spent that time. With a different goal, thinking that it was going to manifest in the posting. Um, but I think what we need clarity on is, can we do more than just the. What is articulated and delineated in Ed Code in terms of that vacancy? And if it is, i- if it has to be that literal interpretation, we can't do, we can't do anything else about that. But we can still use it as part of the process regardless.
If in fact, that was literally the process, that is. There were these qualifications and no others. Then San Mateo would be improper in asking for a resume. They would be improper in asking for a statement of qualifications because that would be limiting. Obviously, you need some criteria to make a decision. That will inform the decision. And so it. That interpretation can't be correct. That you have no other qualifications, because then you would be like, well, let's draw by lottery, because they're all qualified.
Right, but then you'd interview them.
But if there's no further qualifications, then your interviews don't matter because you're not entitled. To apply any qualifications to your decision. And clearly, that is an absurd result. That cannot be the law.
Trustee Ewing, we will go back and, and validate that, but, um, everybody can put together a resume. That is not a limiting factor. And that's what we're trying to say. If you're asking for someone and you're limiting their ability. By even applying, by putting in additional requirements beyond what's stated in law. And with San Mateos, you, all you have to do is go to their board page and you can see it says board vacancies. And it says a statement, and then it also says submit a resume. That is not limiting anyone. If we get clarification on the questions that the board subcommittee wanted us to ask, we will ask, can we put these questions out there? Then we will get an interpretation and validation. But when we did the research and when, um. Legal counsel did the research, that was what we found, and that was after the fact. And I do recall when we had the meeting. We said we would go and look at other colleges and review and see what they had provided. And that's where we found that. And that's the interpretation that we got from legal counsel.
Trustee Johannes?
So I understand, um, the minimum qualifications as listed on page three. But then if you go to page six, perhaps I'm misunderstanding something. Number one, in the procedure, it says you advertise in local media. And at the same time, you can ask for an application. That would, I assume, be the desired qualifications, correct? So we can, in tandem, as, as listed here, this is what I see. In tandem, ask for an application.
The application is a statement of why you want to be a board member and your resume.
Right.
That, but it, it doesn't say desirable qual, you must be, you know, uh.
I'm saying, we can include that in the first step of the process, which is what he's saying, which at the same time in my mind translates to desire. We have the. Physic, or explicitly say that, but we can still ask for an application.
We, we will.
Yeah, and I, and I just want to clarify, what we talked about in the committee were a list of a number of things. It wasn't just. A, application or a resume. It, it was, uh, it was a list of things. And that is what. That, that is what, and, and this wasn't done in a vacuum. This was done in consultation with outside counsel. Um, because we even talked about, um, the proof of residency. And we talked about just having an attestation that they attest to where they live at. But it was a, it was a number of different things that, that when we looked at it. Would seem to be expanding the, the scope of the qualifications just for an applicant, just for someone to apply. And, and if we want to talk about limiting that. Okay, a resume, that's more in line, but the, the. Not litany, but the number of questions that we discussed to ask during the application process seemed to be outside of the scope. And the spirit of the Ed Code.
We need to move forward tonight. Staff has put forward a recommendation. I don't see an alternative at this point. At this late date to an alternative. We must act tonight. Correct? So I, I guess I'm just gonna say, oh, well. We're, we're between a rock and a hard place unless somebody has a suggestion. And I don't care to try to craft language from the dais today. So, let's move forward.
I think a suggestion would be to ask for a resume or a brief statement, no more than so many words. But I think just the number of other questions that was, that were discussed after looking at the citation from the Ed Code was outside of the scope.
And I beg to differ, but, um. We need to move forward, so. Staff did what it's gonna do. Let's vote.
Any other questions before we do so? Okay, let's go to a roll call.
So my understanding is this announcement's gonna go forward, it's gonna ask for a resume and a statement of qualifications? Is that?
Is gonna ask for a candidate's statement.
A candidate's statement.
Statement, yeah. So if, if.
Relevant experience, community engagement, employment, reason for interest. That's what we're asking for. That's number one in procedure.
Okay, so are you going to, um. I, I have you looked at, I would actually be more comfortable if, if we mimicked what, let's say, our neighboring school did. If you're comfortable with that, or if we are comfortable with that, because then at least we.
I'm not comfortable with any of it, but I'm gonna vote yes on whatever we decide here.
If we can mimic, um, San Mateo, and just do it exactly that way, but specific to us, then at least there won't be a.
Uh, also a point of order, uh, I'm sorry, uh, trustee Reese, I wasn't able to hear what you had stated, but, um, we're also discussing the timeline. So, and that's supposed to be part of the vote. I just want to make sure that. We get that included. With this. If anybody's talking, I can't hear you just a little.
No, we're just trying to locate the timeline.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sasha.
No problem.
I think the timeline recommendations are page five of our supporting document. Applications due by February nine. Screening. Oh, yeah, and then there's chart. Thank you. Trustee Johannes.
And our special meeting or would be the March fourteen, if a, a special meeting. It's a regular meeting, so.
Any other questions or discussion colleagues? Got it. Okay. Um, let's go ahead and proceed to a vote unless there are any other questions or discussion from my colleagues. Trustee Quinlan?
The vote is on the timeline and the qualifications, right?
Correct.
And the posting.
And the posting. Everybody good? Shall we move to a vote?
Yep.
Okay. Let's do it. Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yeah.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarise?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving to twelve point six, standing board committee appointments. That would be me. Um, I have some suggestions based on some interest and input from my colleagues. So I just read them out and see what everybody thinks. Okay. Um, finance for Cindy. I'm hoping you would share it.
No, thank you.
No?
But I will definitely be on the.
You'll be on it? Okay, fine. Okay. Um, and then I, Bill and Louis for the Finance and Budget Committee. Would that be okay? Then either of you be interested in sharing? Don't all jump at once.
Okay. I'll do it.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Okay, and then for student success and accreditation, Nikki, would you be willing to chair that?
I would love.
Wonderful. And then myself and trustee Johannes will be on that committee with you. Is that okay?
I appreciate it. I, I, I do think. I appreciate it. I, I, I do think student success is, um, quite important, and I would be very helpful on the team. I will say that, uh, part of my platform and my campaign, I had three of them, and one of them was budget transparency, so I'd really like to be in the budget and finance.
Okay.
Maybe she should share it, too.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that. So for budget and finance, we'll have Bill, Louis, and Shuweet. Would you be willing to chair that as well?
Yes, I will.
And then for student success and accreditation, I'll be, um, trustee Gonzalez, you in? You'll be chairing that with myself, and hopefully your new trustee will be able to join. Is everybody comfortable with that? All right. Let's go ahead and move, uh, actually, can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second. I don't think that requires a motion. That's a board chair.
That's true. It's on our, it's on our action list, that's why.
Oh, well, if you want to vote on it, I'm happy to.
Let's go ahead. Why not? All right.
Can I just, I'm sorry to interrupt, uh, President Pope, just to confirm, I have trustee Whitrow, trustee Quinlan, and trustee Shuweet Johannes on the Board Committee Finance and Budget. Correct?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and then I have trustee Ewing as chair, yourself, Pope, uh, Vice, uh, President Pope, and then, uh, trustee Johannes again as the student success and accreditation.
It would just be myself and trustee Gonzalez, you in on student success.
Oh, God, okay.
And we'll leave the space for the new trustee.
Okay, oh, that's what you meant by new trustee. I thought it was trustee Johannes. Okay, my apologies.
Incoming appointed trustee.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, ready for the vote? I got student trustee Hogan? Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice? Did she say it?
Yeah. Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Let's go to announcements and reports. Um, Board of Trustees, do you have, colleagues, do you have any reports? Um, trustee Reese?
Not tonight.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Johannes?
Uh, nope, just Happy New Year. I'm glad to hear the numbers are up, even though we're in the beginning of a term. I feel like everyone's motivated to continue with the pep in our step, so thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Uh, no report tonight. Thank you.
Vice President Quinlan?
Just said, uh, I'm going up this weekend to participate in the league training and, uh, board ma, uh, board meeting, and then, uh, I guess the, um, with the legislature.
Thank you for that. Trustee Whitrow?
Uh, just a brief item. The other night I was watching Channel Seven, um, ABC, five o'clock news, and it was an interesting, um, start to a, a program saying that the University of California has made a decision to accept a lot more students from the California community colleges. And then I saw a, um, picture of, uh, a brief picture of Merritt and a brief picture of Laney. And then the two presidents were interviewed, which was, Mr. Johnson, good job. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, one thing I will say just for myself, I know Chancellor, you and I discussed closing in memory of the victims of gun violence that have been here in Oakland and around our state. I know that I can speak for all of us, that that weighs very heavily on us and our family, and their families are in our prayers and thoughts, so I wanted to uplift that. Um, trustee Quinlan, did you want to go ahead with announcements, please?
Yes, uh, announcements for January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Welcome back, students. Welcome week events are happening throughout the week at each campus. Visit the college websites for details. Spring is free at the Peralta Colleges, and it's not too late to enroll. Visit www.peralta.edu and click on Spring is Free for more information. The last day to add regular session classes is Sunday, January twenty-ninth. The community is invited to Merritt College on Wednesday, February fourth, at ten AM for the groundbreaking ceremony for the new Child Development Center. We hope the trustees, students, faculty, staff, and community can join us. Chancellor Jackson has asked that we take a moment of silence at the end of the meeting in memorial for those taken from us due to gun violence at Monterey Park, Half Moon Bay, and earlier today, right here in Oakland. Our thoughts and prayers go out to their loved ones. Flags will be flown at half staff for the remainder of the week on Peralta campuses.
Thank you very much, and with that, we are adjourned.